Hey, Don. Councilmember Willis.
Good evening.
Yeah.
We're good. We're good.
Greetings from Cape Canaveral. We hear you loud and clear.
Great. It's, it's, yes, it is a very early morning here.
I agree. Councilmember Willis, could you speak back one more time running a volume test?
Yes, it is very early and a little chilly here in Nairobi.
Yes, thank you, councilmember. I believe we are finished. Is there anything else on your side that we need to handle before we get started?
Uh, no, I think we're good.
Okay, and I assume we sound loud and clear on your side as well?
Excellent. I, I hear you very well. I can't speak for the rest of them, but.
Great. Well, thank you. Guess we'll, uh, get started here shortly. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll remind our city manager and city attorney, if you don't get to them, or if you don't, yes, in real time is the, that's, that's on me. So maybe you can give me a signal if I'm missing it and I'll make sure. I would like that. I would prefer that if I don't have to regu-, you know, Don controls his own. Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, councilmember Willis, you probably heard us just working through that, but you're, you will have the ability to mute yourself and do that. I, I will not control that.
That, that's fine. I just wanted to be sure.
Thank you. That's great. Glad we got that worked out. That takes the pressure off.
So you're on the attending screen now, so I don't think you need to mess with the staff screen now, but Don's good.
Okay, I see now.
Nobody's on yet, but I imagine closer we get, people will start. So you prefer using the touchpad, right?
Yes.
This will be backup. I'm gonna turn it off now.
But I can use it if I have trouble.
So it's all switched there, turn on, and then it'll red light once when it turns on. So.
Thank you. Perfect. I think that's like a law in A D. Yeah, check it twice and then two more times. Dr. Roberts. And just encourage people to come down to City Hall.
Hi, Don.
And I'll say it before we get started here. If you have a public comment, please fill out a card at the front there and bring it to our sergeant in arms. And we'll make sure that you're heard during the public participation portion of the meeting. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is December 6th, 2022. It is 6 o'clock PM. We are at 100 Polk Avenue in Cape Canaveral, Florida, 32920. At the City Hall Council Chamber meetings, I call this meeting to order. This is a regular council meeting. This time, I'd like to ask councilmember Raymond, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. And for those of you who are listening at home, I want to thank you. This time, city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kellum.
Here.
Mayor Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Willis. Okay, got him.
You mind? Councilmember Willis, it looks like you are unmuted. You don't mind. Continue to talk until we acknowledge. We cannot hear you.
Okay.
You, we hear you now for the first time. You are broken up. We can't quite understand you. If you could continue to talk or. Councilmember, it is very difficult to hear you. And if you can continue to talk. I tell you what, I think we will. Hello, councilmember? I think, does this council agree that that is councilmember Willis?
Yes.
City clerk, if you're okay, I would say give, give him some time. It is difficult to still hear you, councilmember Willis. So maybe if you can make some adjustments, we heard you loud and clear earlier through the test. I think we'll give it a little bit of time and hopefully things go our way. For those of you listening in, councilmember Willis is in the continent of Africa, so. He, he is, I believe it's about 2 o'clock in the morning there. They prepared this morning and tested. Everything's went well, but at this time, we hope we can improve. One more time, councilmember?
All right, is this any better?
Yeah.
Yes. Hear you loud and clear. Thank you. All right. City clerk, are we okay? Good. So at this time, an exciting time, we are going to the councilmember's oath of office. First one is for councilmember Kim Davis. Congratulations, councilmember Davis. This time, oath of office for councilmember Maria Mickey Kellum. Congratulations, councilmember Kellum. This time, councilmember Davis, if you'd like to say anything, please.
I promised I was gonna keep this short, but I just wanted to say how grateful I am that I got reelected. I wanted to thank all of you that helped me make this happen, for those that knocked doors for me, that made phone calls for me, that talked to your neighbors for me, and of course, that voted for me. I, I truly appreciate every one of you. But I have to also thank my two sisters, I get teary-eyed, that, who, without them, I wouldn't be sitting here. I appreciate you so very much. And I've had such a wonderful experience during the past year, and I've learned so much, but I look forward to in the next few years, working on the things that I'm passionate about and, and about work, and as well as the needs of this city. I also look forward to working with this council. Each councilmember brings so much to the dais, different backgrounds, different experiences, different opinions, and different ideas. I value and appreciate the diversity in all the councilmembers and have no doubt that this council will listen to all the people of Cape Canaveral and will continue to make Canaveral a wonderful place to live. So I thank you again to all that supported me.
Thank you. Councilmember Kellum?
Yes, thank you. It's an honor again to be elected by the people of the city of Cape Canaveral, the city that I love and have been my home for over 30 years. I am happy and joyful to be the voice of the people. Again, I would like to thank all the volunteers. It takes a lot of work to get elected. There's a few of my volunteers in the audience tonight. I thank you, and I look forward to working with the staff and the council and moving the city forward in a positive direction. Thank you again, and it is honor to be here representing the people of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Raymond, any remarks? Just want to make sure.
This is my last year, and I hope that I can continue to enjoy serving the people of our community. I think that we have done a lot in the five years since I've been elected, and I continue to support new projects so that we can move our city forward. I know that so many people have said it's looking great. I think we've hired a lot of new people who will also help to push our city forward. And as I said, I'm looking forward to taking part in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis is under the oath of office. This is a time, you know, where we're all gonna come together again. It's an exciting time. No matter what the path coming forward, we're all working together. And so I want to just make sure everyone has a chance to say something if they did. So if you'd like to, please.
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate councilmember Davis and councilmember Kellum on their reelections. And I'm very much looking forward to working with all of the council and listening to all of the citizens of Cape Canaveral for the coming year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And last but not least, city manager?
I'm also thrilled to work for this council. I, I've enjoyed this council, and I know that we can do great things, so looking forward to continuing.
I echo all that is said, and congratulations to both of you. Look forward to the coming years. Thank you. Okay, now that we get to move forward, we are now at the selection of a mayor pro tem. This is, I believe, our second year under this process. It's worked really well. We've got a procedure put together. City manager, any comments you want on this? Would you explain it?
Yes, sir. Typically, for the audience, for the selection of mayor pro tem, the council writes down on a slip of paper who they want their choice to be, and we pass it down to the city attorney. City attorney reads them, and the highest vote getter gets that position. If there's a tie, then there's a rebound for those that were tied for. Because councilmember Willis is not physically here to turn in a piece of paper, what I've asked him, Mayor, if it's okay with you and the council, is if the four councilmembers can write their votes down, pass them to the ma-, pass them to the city attorney, and then I'll ask councilmember Willis to say aloud his nomination. I will write that down in this piece of paper and hand this to the city attorney, and then he can read all of them, if that's okay.
Perfectly fine. Okay, well, all right, city council, so we know the, the process. Any questions council has for staff? Okay, any comments as we move forward? I do have a comment I would like to make, but to, to, to all of you. And it's, I have enjoyed the progress that we have made, and I have actually gonna go back to something Mayor Hoag had said. He had this opportunity to work with Mayor Pro Tem Mike Brown, and then the following year, when it came this time, he said he, he looked forward to working again another year. And my comments to this council is before you vote, to know that I look forward to working another year with all of you. And I would like to work with councilmember Kellum moving forward as mayor pro tem. I think she's done a good job in years ago. And if any other councilmembers would like to say anything, typically how we've done it in the past, we talk about it before we vote. Councilmember Willis, I would say it would be good to mute if that. Council member Willis, I would say it would be good to mute if that's okay, in between you speaking. But whatever you did there worked really well, so thank you. That's all I had to say, council. Anyone can go in any order if you want to speak.
Are we going to vote? Because I think that was the process that was explained, that we were going to vote for.
Yes, we are.
We, as a council, would choose for mayor pro temp.
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. So you're one out of five. Thank you.
Yes, and this is after we, if anyone likes an opportunity to discuss it, we will vote. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Council member Willis? Assuming you're not, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to confirm, would you like to say anything, council member Willis?
No, not this time.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, council, we can go ahead and submit our votes. Thank you. I can pass them down for you. Thank you.
Mayor, it appears that the city attorney has all four handwritten votes. If you want to ask council member Willis to read his aloud, I'll write it in, and I'll hand it to Anthony.
Okay, council member Willis, we're ready for your vote.
Okay, Don Willis.
Counsel, did we confirm it's Don Willis? Okay, thank you.
I selected his name on the sheet. I'll turn that in.
Thank you.
That's all it takes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'm honored. I'm honored to be the mayor pro temp for the city of Cape Canaveral.
Okay. So a part of this is the nomination. The next part is that you accept by your comments. I assume you do accept. Okay.
Of course.
So we're at this point, council, any questions before we make a motion? Okay, can we, can we confirm that the, those will be submitted in the minutes at the next, the vote tallies? Thank you very much. All right, looking for a motion to appoint Mayor Pro Temp to council member Angela Raymond?
I'll make a motion to have council member Raymond as mayor pro temp.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion by council member Davis, got a second by council member Raymond. Any discussion? Okay, city clerk?
Council member Davis?
Four.
Council member Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Council member Raymond?
Four.
Council member Willis?
Four.
Congratulations, council member Raymond. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, unless council would like to vote otherwise, if there's any rearranging of the seating tonight, that we do it at the next meeting, if that's okay, something we can discuss. Okay. Thank you. All right, so now, selection of the mayor pro temp is done, and we will approve the agenda as written. I think we have something, this is the time where we want to move anything around on the agenda as far as order goes. I would like to propose that we move the discussion item number eleven right after public participation, just before we get into the consent agenda.
I'll second.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I will make a formal motion, but that's, I haven't made that yet. Okay. So, yes, I move to amend the agenda by moving discussion item number eleven above the consent agenda. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Mayor Morrison, second by council member Kellum. Any more discussion? City clerk?
Council member Davis?
Four.
Council member Kellum? Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Temp Raymond? Council member Willis?
Four.
Okay. Passes five oh to move the item up. So now, any other items that we want to move? Or amend? Okay. With that, we can move on to the next item. This time, we're getting into the presentations and interviews portion of our meeting. The first one I'm excited to give is a presentation in honor of Brevard County Sheriff's Office Sergeant Jason McMillan, commending him for his life-saving actions and dedication to keeping the community safe. And at this time, city manager, would you mind?
I'd be honored to read it.
Thank you.
As the officer will come up, Mayor will go down with the commendation. I would like to read the summary here. On May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, Brevard County Sheriff's Office Sergeant Jason McMillan, Sergeant McMillan, was dispatched to a residence in the city responding to an individual who was not breathing normally. Upon arriving on scene and assessing the situation, Sergeant McMillan quickly realized the individual was having some sort of cardiac episode and had stopped breathing. After checking for and finding no pulse, Sergeant McMillan immediately began cardiopulmonary resuscitation efforts in an attempt to bring the individual back. Canaveral Fire Rescue arrived on scene and requested Sergeant McMillan continue providing the individual with CPR. As Canaveral Fire Rescue began to evaluate the situation, they realized the individual regained a pulse and was quickly transported to Cape Canaveral Hospital. Sergeant McMillan's quick response very likely saved the forty-two-year-old individual's life, whose mother later shared extreme gratefulness to Brevard County Sheriff's Office. Canaveral Precinct Commander Byron Keck and Lieutenant Brett Lockhart provided the city details of this account for which Sergeant McMillan was awarded a life-saving bar, and became deputy of the month for the month of June twenty twenty-two at the BCSO Canaveral Precinct. City of Cape Canaveral mayor, council, and staff now wish to recognize and command, or commend Sergeant McMillan for his life-saving actions and dedication to keeping the community safe. Thank you, sir.
Lives in the city of Cape Canaveral. But thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do. Council, any? Any comments, anything else moving on? It's an honor. Those are the ones that it makes me thankful that we live here. At this time, we are going to receive a presentation and provide direction to the city manager regarding Waste Pro early renewal option. We have some representatives from Waste Pro here, but I'm gonna pass it over to our city manager.
Yes, sir. Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Earlier this year, you guys can come on up. Earlier this year, Waste Pro informally approached the city manager to discuss the effect of inflationary pressures and the corresponding effect on their operations. The Waste Pro contract, which is attached, was approved in twenty fourteen via ordinance number thirteen twenty fourteen. The Waste Pro contract was amended via ordinance number oh three twenty fifteen to provide for annual payments to the city in lieu of performance bonds or letter of credit for the initial five-year term. It is attached. In twenty nineteen, the Waste Pro contract was extended through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. It is attached. This is the current and latest extension. The city's residential rate, beginning in January of twenty twenty-three, will be twelve dollars and two cents, and the commercial rate is four dollars and sixteen cents per cubic yard. As the year progressed and because inflationary pressures continued to escalate, Waste Pro approached the city manager with a concept intended to ease those pressures while balancing the interests of the city of Cape Canaveral with a potential win-win scenario. During the current year, Waste Pro representatives also met with individual council members one-on-one to discuss the concept. Specifically proposed an early contract renewal with a modest price increase now, as early as January twenty twenty-three, in exchange for the assurance of continued competitive rates through twenty twenty-seven. Waste Pro representatives are here tonight to provide an overview of the concept and receive city council feedback. This is a presentation item only. I also want to mention that council member Willis provided to me a spreadsheet that he created, and it's been distributed at such your dais locations tonight. And he's asked me to go through it, if you would like to hear his thoughts on it, in case his connection was bad. Mayor?
Thank you. This time, I think we're gonna go ahead and go to Waste Pro. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Flatlock just switched for Florida here with Division Manager Dean Rollit. For congratulations to Sergeant and to the two reelections that just took place. So we are here tonight to request a very moderate price increase, a very modest price increase, if you will. And the reason is, is simply due to inflation. We are all living in a post-pandemic world, where inflation is rampant. Go to the grocery store, the gas station, buying clothing, everyone understands what's going on with inflation. That's just something that's been taking place, and it seems to be rampant. Just a little history, if you will, if you'll hear me. The current contract, the current solid waste contract expires in September of twenty twenty-four. If this contract were to ride out to its very end term, it would go out to bid, and the resulting bids that we've been seeing would be nothing short of sticker shock. And we'll get into that later. And that's what we're trying to prevent for the city's residents and businesses. So there is another alternative, and that alternative is to, if the council sees fit, to agree to just a very modest price increase and extend the current, the current contract out to twenty twenty-seven. So anyhow, I'll just, that's my introduction. I'll get into the slides if we may. And thank you, Mia, for assisting us with this. So there we go. Here we are in City Hall. Next, please. So just background about our company. It was founded, Waste Pro of Florida, was founded by a solid waste legend, dime Jenny, is a first-generation American back in two thousand and one. He's based his company in central Florida, Longwood, and is a family-owned, central Florida-based company. Dean runs our local division here in Brevard County. And the six contracts, as you can see, are Cape Canaveral all the way down through Palm Shores. And each one of those municipalities, if you were to reach out to them, would give Waste Pro a thumbs up. We are known for excellent levels of service. Next, please. So here we go. Recent market conditions. Again, we're all in a post-pandemic world. We have supply chain bottlenecks, driver shortages, and demand spikes. The three main commodities which greatly affect a solid waste contract are labor, fuel, and steel. Now, there's hundreds of other items that obviously go into a solid waste contract, such as insurance, uniforms, copy paper, et cetera, et cetera. But these are the three main items that have been greatly affected by inflation. So our labor costs have gone up on average of thirty percent to attract CDL drivers and skilled mechanics. And these are internal numbers. We've had to offer bonuses, sign-on bonuses, and also restructure all wage scale. And that's something that we are taking on ourselves. Secondly is fuel. Fuel has increased fifty-five percent since twenty twenty, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty twenty, number two diesel wholesale. And that, that number comes from the U.S. Energy Information Administration, or the EIA Wholesale Report dated ten seventeen twenty-two. The third commodity item is steel. We receive a, we are realizing a fifty-four percent increase in hot-rolled band steel. And steel, that's the type of steel that goes into our trucks and commercial containers. So again, things other than tires, fuel, fluids, uniforms, these are the three main components that are hitting a square between the highs, and will go on soon inflation. And the steel report came from Steel Benchmarker Price History Report dated ten ten of twenty twenty-two. And this is a pricing system for the steel industry. Next slide, please. Okay, current municipal rates. The cities, the residents, and the city are currently paying eleven-ten per unit. And as you can see, we went from lowest to highest. These residents in Cape Canaveral have an extremely low rate. And this is in comparison with the barrier island municipalities, if you will, or the A-one-A contracts. These are cities that are more or less in line with Cape Canaveral in terms of metrics, if you will. So as you can see, the rate in Cape Canaveral is very low for residential and commercial rates. And they start to climb up into the twenties. And most recently, the last one, Malabar, that's the most recent contract that hit the street, and that was a little over a year ago. And that's forty-three eighty-eight per resident per unit. That's an extremely high rate. And these rates are indicative of the way things are going. Again, I'll get into this a little bit later. Next slide, please. All right, again, your current solid waste contract, as is, expires nine thirty twenty twenty-four. Two options. Again, let the contract ride out with current terms and pricing. What we have here, from Windermere, Howman the Hills, and on down to Town of Malabar, are rates that are very, very recent. These are extremely, within a year, actually within the last few months, rates that have hit the street after a bid. So we're seeing, as you can see, the city of Windermere, Orange County, at twenty-three eighty-two per unit. Again, this is per resident, per month. Yes, correct, these are the winning rates. And the city of Palm Coast, right up the next county up, I'm sorry, next two counties up, thirty-two, thirty-one per unit. Again, Town of Malabar here in Brevard County, forty-three eighty-eight per home. So when I spoke with Todd about a year ago, I warned him, I said, rates are starting to creep up into the mid-twenties. We're wrong. They're actually creeping up into the low thirties. And inflation hasn't even slowed down yet. What we're trying to do is to prevent sticker shock for when this contract, if this contract were to go out to bid in September or October of twenty twenty-four. So what we are presenting, or what we're offering, is to renew the contract early at a modest rate. And that rate exactly would be three dollars and ninety cents over in the bulk, with the residents going to be paying in January. And also a dollar seventy-nine per cubic yard price. We'll get into that shortly. So renew the contract early with rates that have already been absorbed, for commodity pricing to receive a competitive market rate through twenty twenty-seven. If we can do this, we can hedge a major, major sticker shock, if you will, in twenty twenty-four, if it were to go out to bid. Next slide, please. So option one, back to option one, no change, just letting this thing ride out. As you can see, current pricing is at eleven-ten. As of January, the rate will increase to twelve-oh-two, and that's per annual CPI. And as you can see, if you ride this out, if you ride this line out, at the end of the contract in twenty twenty-four, the estimated rates that would be bid would be somewhere in the twenty-five-dollar range and up. Again, we're seeing rates in below thirties now. And the same for commercial cubic yards. So by exercising option one, please understand that the rates in twenty twenty-five, January of twenty twenty-five, can be reasonably expected to either double your current rates or more than double. Next slide, please. So this is what we're asking. We're asking for a rate of fifteen dollars and ninety-two cents, which is still lower than the lowest current rate, which would then, City of Coco. This would still keep the city lower than anybody on these barrier islands. And also the commercial, we're asking for a dollar seventy-nine increase on commercial, commercial rate to five dollars and ninety-five cents. And again, that's an extremely low rate. And as you can see, at this contract, if this early contract renewal were to take place to twenty twenty-seven, if you ride the numbers all the way out to the far right, the residential rate in twenty twenty-seven would still be over twenty dollars per home for money. And again, that's lower than most rates are now. So again, we're trying to get ahead of this inflation curve and keep the residents' rates low. And the same for commercial rates. So again, we're trying to get ahead of this inflation early, keep, keep the residents rates low and the same for commercial rates. Five ninety five is the rate that we request. And that will ride out with current CPI numbers being an average of five percent, seven dollars and twenty three cents by the end of, or the beginning of twenty twenty seven. So the result would be exercising this option would allow Cape Canaveral to avoid, number one, a complex R O C process. Residential and commercial accounts would only see moderate increases. And that's it. Next, next slide. And the next slide is, is just a recap of Waste Pro and things that we have to offer. As you can see, there's John Jennings bottom left. Receiving his hall of aim, hall of aim award and, and some other items that that are just conducive to this contract. So that's all we have. It's just a very basic, a very simple request. We feel that's very moderate. And it would ride out again until twenty twenty seven. And again, this would alleviate a lot of headache sticker shock, the residents and businesses of Cape Canaveral. And with that, I close.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm gonna thank you very much. I assume you're willing to take those on council. Any questions for Waste Pro? Team here today. Thank you very much for taking the time to explain. I've got. City manager, do, do you have any questions at this time or anything or any things that you want to point out? I've got some, but just want to make sure.
Just that if there is any direction to provide, that'd be helpful. If we take no direction, if there's no direction given, I will assume we're going to ride it out. So just looking for a direction.
Thank you. Yes. Mayor Pro Tem.
My question is, when, when is a final decision on this necessary? By, is there a certain date that we need to be looking at?
They're, they've told me they would like to see it implemented as early as January of twenty twenty three if possible.
When we say, can I piggyback up your question? When we say implemented, I guess. Assigned contract by January?
Yeah, I'm not sure that's a realistic goal. Let's say if council were to agree in theory to an early renewal. There would have to be a contracted bendum approved by the company and the city attorney's office. And I'm not sure that would be ready in time for January, but we could make it a goal if the council wishes, probably more likely February. But we'll, we'll certainly do the best we can.
But that would be, when you say that's what we would have the. The control over that, after that you would implement, that's the milestone, right? When you say implemented for us?
Yeah, they're, they're looking for relief sooner rather than later. And to summarize, they're, they're throwing us a carrot that we can lock in a better rate for the future if we adopt early.
Okay.
I have one more question, mayor.
Yes, please.
What I noticed is that most of the contracts started at, on October first, the beginning of the financial year. And I was just curious. Is that true? Is that true in this case that the contract usually started at the beginning of our financial year?
Yes, it always has aligned with the fiscal year.
Thank you.
The percentage, I got a question. The percentage increase. Where do I find that? Because. From, so, yeah, I guess that's a. Across the board, just in total revenue, we spent last year with Waste Pro eight hundred something thousand. I, it's on the budget book. Trying to think, when we ask ourselves, what's the financial impact? Franchise fees were a hundred sixteen thousand. That's already in our agreement. That's going up another five percent every year, I think, right?
Current, currently, if I may. The, the way the contract's written is whatever the CPI is on one January, then the, the city reaps that. So we're getting about a hundred and fourteen thousand right now. So whatever the CPI is, let's say it's five point nine, whatever it is. Then that's the percentage we get on the franchise fee. Okay, and, and that's already been built in based on, they showed you the chart. The rate that's going to go up effective January first is like twelve oh two or whatever it is from eleven ten. So that's when it kicks in. And so every year, every year in January, the city gets a CPI increase from Waste Pro. And like I said, we're about at a hundred and fourteen thousand and then it'll go up again based on the CPI in January. And that's how it's written right now. And I think, mayor, the question you may be asking also is that. I, I think what the mayor's asking too is if. The city accepted this graduated increase. How does that affect? The, the increase for us for the.
Franchise?
For the franchise fee, yeah. I, I, right?
I'm looking at.
Yeah, like how is that going to affect us? Are we just gonna, because there's a computed, based on the way the contract is every. Every October I compute with the, the, the rate is CPI and I work with them. And then it gets implemented in January. I think. What he's asking is, would that methodology stay the same? Or would our, would our franchise fee go up based on CPI continue to if we take this? Take this graduated deal?
So, excuse me. So we've never discussed that part.
And the grand, and the franchise fee is obviously extremely important to the residents.
Sure, the franchise fee for this contract is not tied to revenue. So there, then there's two ways to it. Some you have a flat fee, which is primarily on yours, it's a flat fee that grows. Others, it's a percent of revenue based on collections. So those could fluctuate up and down depending on what the rate is.
Right.
That works out. So I would say, you know, I, I don't have an answer for that.
I think.
Best way, because we have, we have not discussed it, but typically your goes up with CPI. The CPI goes.
Right. So mayor, what, what he basically is saying is, of course, there's not a contract written right now, but if we stayed. If, if we agreed to the graduated increase, then. We would also stay unless when it's rewritten, the contracts rewritten, we would stay with the franchise fee. And the CPI, because that's how it's written in their contract. That's what we get. So we can, we would continue to get that. But when the contract's rewritten, as we pay the bigger fee, then we would have to talk to Waste Pro about whether or not. We're going to keep that methodology there or we're going to get something better or. Or whatever it'll be, but the contract hasn't been written yet, so I don't know what that, that says. Okay.
So that's one question and there's few more, and I appreciate your question on when the deadline. I understand. The, the problem. And the, the proposed solution is to, you know, increase rate. But. There's a lot to look at here and I want to make sure we have reasonable time on the council to do our due diligence as well. And make sure that we understand. What this means when you compare the other municipalities. I think we have to compare their franchise fees too. Because isn't it reasonable to think that they might have a low rate at another city or a higher rate, but they also have a very low franchise fee? Sort of like insurance deductibles and. And those are the things I just want to double check and make sure that when I see those other cities, that's a very. You know, eye opening chart to say, wow, we are. The, the lowest rate, which. Something to somewhat be proud of, but at the same time, we want happy service providers and vendors. And so. I'm, I'm trying to figure out, is it an apples to apples comparison? The city of Cocoa Beach, is it twenty five dollars, I believe? Yeah, and we're, we're at. Eleven dollars roughly, so yeah. The level of service that they receive, does it differ? I understand that's Waste Management. So. A two, one, one. Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm finished.
I have one other concern. I live in a condo. And most of the condominiums have to propose their budget. In usually October, November. I know my husband has been working on the budget. And then it has to be approved. So my concern, it's, it's more of a timing issue. And, you know, my concern is everybody has their budgets all set. For twenty twenty three. So that's a concern because we have a lot of condominiums here in town. I'm worried about, I'm just thinking in terms of the residents and how the residents are going to feel. Everyone's hurting. I understand that part. All right, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to explain some of my concerns and some, some of the things that are going on in my brain.
Oh yes, thank you very much, Todd. I appreciate that. Yes, for the council member Willis and all the public listening. It's helpful to speak directly and thank you. So. Are you good? Okay. Thank you. So yes, I think I would like to. If a change is needed, now that I understand it, I think the council, we can work towards making any change needed. But it is going to take some time for, for us to get into this and understand that some of this is the first time I've seen. Some of this, and so I'm not saying, no, I want to just understand it. And I do have a public comment card here. I don't know if that person wanted to wait or not and we can talk to council. This is a presentation maybe at the end, but. For me, I, I just want to thank you and say, I want to dig into this and, and work with our city staff and, and. Make sure we understand and try to act as expeditiously as we can under your circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more thing. Thank you for your service. I know that it's been challenging, especially the last couple of months. So thank you.
Thank you. The member from the public who wanted to submit or card, if you, did you want to speak now? You'd like counsel, are we okay with that? And this is a presentation and it's not public participation yet, but it's the only one I got and I figured. Hello, please state your name and.
Yes, thank you. My name is Scott. And first I want to say that as a. Homeowner in the city of Cape Canaveral, I think we've really done a really good job. They always pick up my trash, they always pick up my yard debris. And when I have a problem with the garbage can that might be damaged or whatnot, they're always right there to take care of that. And I think Cape Canaveral does not want to lose. Government service. We're talking about rates that have significantly increased. And many of you might know me and I own profitable carding, which is a rollout company. And I spoke here on this podium many times before. And I know that the increases which they've talked about, particularly in the top three, they're spot on. They're absolutely spot on. And if I had to run my business without having an increase over the last couple of years, I probably wouldn't be in business. So hats off to them for being able to do what they do. The one thing that I do want to specify and one of the main reasons why I'm here is because if you remember. This was ten months to a year ago, we talked about dumpster rentals. For residents of Cape Canaveral. And, and if there's going to be any changes in the, in their, in their contract, I would just like to be able to take a look at that. And make sure that we're going in the, in the right direction as we have been. You know, Waste Pro has talked about them having significant labor issues. And I know that's really true. And, and it's, it's really, I think, been helpful for a lot of the residents in Cape Canaveral that when they needed a dumpster. That they did have some other choices. And it's not a dig against Waste Pro. But, but more or less what it is is saying that because we gave more choices to the residents, that they could get a dumpster when they, when they wanted. Because Waste Pro is, they're, they're strapped. They've got a lot of things going on and they don't have a lot of people knocking on their door with applications. Specifically qualified CDL grant. So. I support you on that, on that endeavor. And I just wanted to put that notion out there that if there's going to be a change in the contract. I, I would just like to make sure that the, the way that we're doing the rollout dumpsters specifically is in the same direction that it's going. And I guess bottom line is that if I need to see an increase in my garbage, pick up and my yard debris pick up on a weekly basis. I'm open to it because I know that it costs a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. City manager, any comments? I. I would like the, from myself, I would like the opportunity to, to review and to, to meet with you one on one and go through this.
Certainly, and, and we're, I'm writing other comments here that there's been questions about other municipal clients. Franchise fees. And also we can talk about whether the, there's interest in negotiating on C and D dumpsters. On the exclusion contract. So council, if, if that's direction that that's helpful, I can certainly talk to Waste Pro about that and be prepared with answers. To those what if scenarios and if that's helpful.
Yes, anything? I want to move forward and just trying to set expectations. I appreciate that the timeline is that will help. So hopefully we're taking this up, I think, in January and trying to move it forward into February. What I'm saying is, is. I would rather check back in in January and keep it in front of us. It doesn't mean we're getting it done in January. It's just. If needed, progress, I'm certainly willing to do that.
I'm taking down notes, certainly willing to follow whatever direction council gives.
Understood.
Yes, Todd, if I may.
Yes.
Just from a financial perspective, this thing that Waste Pro is offering is, is. You know, when I look at it, it almost looks like in a sense that it may be too good, too good to be true, but it's, it's a very good. It's a very good thing. And I just want council to understand, understand this as we delve into it more. They're giving us a graduated scale and, and we have two years left with them. And then if we stay just where we're at, then at the end of that, the contract gets bid out. And if you notice, the rates, they all double or more than double. And. By taking with their offering, our rates won't double when other cities are having to bid or if we had a bid. And it, you know, doubling in two years. So the way their numbers run, and of course we'll be discussing this. This actually looks like a tremendous opportunity for the city. I know, of course, the city I live in, my rates are already two and a half times what it is in Cape Canaveral. So, but the thing to look at is, we don't have to go for, if we take them out, we don't need a bid in two years. Towards, we know it's, they've already told us and it's going to double, it's going to more than double. But we're not even going to get to that rate by twenty twenty seven because they're giving us a graduated rate. So by twenty twenty seven, these other cities, say like Cocoa Beach, which may be paying forty two dollars. In a couple of years, by twenty twenty seven, maybe paying fifty some dollars. And in Cape Canaveral, they're paying half of that by that time. So just something to think about.
Anything else?
Maybe other council members would like to comment.
I have a brief comment. I, I think that we should make a decision December twentieth, since we have a meeting December twentieth. I think that would be enough time to get the questions answered and the concerns discussed with the city manager. And I think we should put it back on the agenda for December twenty. And I think we should put it back on the agenda for December twentieth, thank you.
Well, certainly, we will have the answers to the questions we've talked about tonight, but then that wouldn't be enough time to have a contract renewal ready.
I like the idea of picking it up in December, yeah, absolutely, what, and I think it's just going to help us move it along.
I do, I agree, I think we should. Pick it up in December, and I think these rates are reasonable. With everything that's increasing and the gradual increase is really good for the citizens and. You know, the sooner we can do it, the better, and maybe by January, we'll have a contract if we bring it up in December.
And council member Willis texted the city clerk saying he's having intermittent connection issues, you might want to try him again.
Okay, any, any more comments from the council? And council member Willis, if you can hear me. I understand that there was some technical issues, but we want to check in with you. Hey, I do see that you're logged on. You are not muted. If you can hear me and you do have. Excuse me, and you have the ability to text our city clerk or send an email or a message that you can hear us, it'll be helpful.
If it's acceptable to the council, he had a discussion with me earlier today that this might happen.
Okay.
That he could hear the council and everything going on here, but we can't hear him, he asked. Would it be okay for him to send me text messages in response? And I said, that's a question for the city attorney to answer, and we might get his opinion on that.
Thank you for that.
And by the way, mayor, he did text me to say that he cannot hear you.
Cannot.
So I just texted him to say, can you rejoin?
But the the question for the. The question he's asking essentially, I believe, in spirit. Is what's the city attorney's opinion if he can hear the discussion but can't be heard by us? Is it, what is the current thought and legal practice for texting responses? To the city manager to be read aloud to the council? Provided those texts could then be submitted to the public record printed out.
I don't know if there's any authority on that, I mean, the important is. Transparency and two way communication. That not only the council can hear, but members of the audience. That have a right to be in attendance. So I'm not sure without doing some digging and research, Todd, that whether there's any authority to support. My personal experience, I haven't seen that where a council member was in attendance by text. Telephone, there's there's guidance. Text, I'm not aware of off the top of my head.
He's back.
Council member Willis. Looks like.
Yes, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Great. I I feel that we need to, I don't know what I've missed in the interim, but. If we can bring it back on December twentieth meeting with some answers to the questions that were raised. I think it would be a great thing to move forward with it, I think the rate changes, the graduated changes. Is good for the city, but I think we need to also look at the franchise fee issues as well, thank you.
Thank you, council, any more questions, comments? Okay. So we don't need to take any action, I think, on this, on the actual documents, you've got, you've heard some direction tonight.
Mayor, if I could repeat it just for council consensus. I will confirm with Waste Pro what their other clients franchise fees are and calculations going forward. I will. Inquire as to their openness to negotiations on the dumpster rental exclusion. And we will bring this back unchanged for the twelve twenty twenty two agenda. Where it will be a question and answer. Format rather than a presentation, so continued discussion item.
Sounds good.
Got it.
All right, so I don't think we need any motions or anything. We're good. Counsel for, okay, we're going to go ahead and move on in Waste Part, thank you again, we'll see you soon. All right. So now we are at the public participation portion of the meeting. This time I have one card here and online. Is checking. Like I don't have anything online. So with that, we can go ahead and begin with Mr. Stephen Stroud. Hi, Mr. Stroud, please come forward and obviously, we know you, but state your name and.
Stephen Stroud, I'm the resident of Cape Canaveral. Council. City staff, mayor, appreciate y'all's time this evening. Once again, I want to speak about the potential for changes on A one A. I see that we've got some maps posted on the wall and. Sending information out about potential changes and to A one A. And one thing I want to keep out in front of everybody is I want to voice, be the voice of the folks that live over off of. King Neptune, River Gardens, and about eighty residences there, coppers and all of them. But we all feel the same way about potential of having a median that separates us and prevents us from making our left hand turns. And headed towards the port. I see that one of the, we presented up here, and one of the possible situations is is. We now have the ability to turn in to Long Point, which will allow us to get back into our residence over there. Off of King Neptune, I see that we cannot turn right back out if that median were to go forward. One thing I want to point out to the council and the folks in the in the city of Cape Canaveral is that. The streets that are on the riverside of A one A do not have a back way to get out, anybody that's on the. On the Atlantic side, on the ocean side. Always has the ability to go one or two directions out of their residence and take another street to get back over onto A one A. We don't have that luxury over on. Riverside, starting at Columbia, it's a dead end, every one of these streets, almost all the way down in public is a dead end, so we have no secondary means. Go down and possibly have an opening in a median when we can do a left. I just want to keep this in front of the council and make them aware and keep everybody aware that. That median goes in, we lose abilities to make turns, every morning I go to. Cape Canaveral to the city of Orlando. I do this five days a week, I have to, I have to make that left hand turn every day, you want to know something? I'm patient, you know, it takes maybe a minute to wait for that light to cycle. And then I get that gap where I can make that left hand turn, I don't drive down that center median, I cross it appropriately. And I make my way over to Orlando, but I don't have any issues getting across it. My, I'm very fearful that that median is going to change that. And also too, it's also going to cause a situation with getting rescue in there. We have a medical event, a fire or something, it's going to slow down the response, plain and simple. They have to negotiate a median and go down and do a turnaround for that, so. Anyway, just want to keep my voice out, and I want to make sure everybody understands that. This is something that a lot of residents oppose, having a median put across there. We like it the way it currently is, and a lot of people like to see it changed, but that's that's the way we feel about it. Council, staff, appreciate y'all's time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stroud, and thank you for your insistence and persistence to to be that voice and. Somebody I think we all respect, and you've always approached it. From a technical standpoint and then also just the the practical side of people's lives that it will impact, so. That's all I have for cars, cards for public participation. I'm going to double check online here. Make sure that we don't have anyone else, I do not see anyone else. And at this time, we moved agenda item, before we get into the consent agenda. We moved it, discussion item eleven up here. I do have two things regarding this, we're about to go into the F dot part, I need to speak with. Our city manager, and I know we've been over an hour, council would, can we take a ten minute break and then come back and get into the A one A? Is that okay with y'all? We take ten, because I need to make sure I got something correct as far as procedure. So, council member Willis, if you heard that, we're going to take a ten minute break and we'll reconvene here at seven fourteen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and at this time, I see you, I do encourage you to go over and look at the. The maps if, and and see what we're looking at, we are going to have an explanation of them if you have not already.
You're gonna gavel down?
What was that? Yes. Okay, so, I can call the meeting back to order here. We are at the item number 11 moved up, which is discuss and provide direction to Florida Department of Transportation FDOT regarding design considerations for state road A1A in Cape Canaveral. Let our city manager kind of when, uh, go through what we're doing here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We have some folks from FDOT here tonight. If you guys would come forward to the, to the microphone, whoever's going to speak, introduce yourself and then I'll explain what we're looking at here.
Manager and engineer record for the roadway reconstruction project.
Thank you, Lori.
Hello, my name's Anthony Miller and I am a project manager at FDOT and I'm the project manager for the project formerly known as the Roundabout, but it's a signal at North Atlantic and the real line of International Drive.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chad Link, I'm the access management manager in traffic operations in the line.
Thank you. And the last time the council held discussion on this, it was because FDOT made it very clear that there's a, there's an important decision that has to be made about the roadway, the intersection of International Drive and A1A. That particular design, which is construction-funded, a decision has to be made, whether we're going to go with a curb, a curb-to-curb dimension of 54 feet or a curb-to-curb dimension of 59.5 feet. There's several important distinctions between these two choices, these two options. But first, before I get into what those differences are, I want to point out what we're looking at, not only on the computer screens, but also what's on the wall over there. They're identical. So, what we're looking at on the computer screen is labeled attachment 3, and that's the same as the one on the left. It's all called alternative 1. And that has the bidirectional turn lane. It does not have a raised curb median. The second one is attachment 4. And it is the map on the right side of the wall and it does have a raised curb median. When the council met about this, there were a number of questions about, well, what will this intersection look like? What will that intersection look like? And they said, can we get more graphics that will answer these questions? So, FDOT hit it out of the park with these graphics. They will stress over and over that these are conceptual only. And, but even so, they're extremely helpful because we get an idea of what a typical impact might look like on this street or that street. And because they're conceptual, I think that's also good news because it also means, hey, we can have some input on this, perhaps, maybe we could tweak this a little bit here and there. They're only going to be able to tweak so far, but they're willing to work with us as far as, as they can, as long as their engineering safety standards are being met. So, what are the differences between the picture on the left on the wall and the picture on the right on the wall? Well, it's not just the median, it's a big one, the median's a big one. But the one on the left has separated bike lane and ped lane. They're separated by raised barrier of concrete so that bikes never interact with pedestrians. That's something that the council wanted. Council wanted separate bike lanes, separate ped lanes. But the council also wanted something that's an option too, which is the raised curb median. When we have a raised curb median, it takes more width. And now you can't have separated bike ped lanes, they have to be combined into an eight-foot lane. So, what do we take from this? We can't have it all, is the answer. We cannot have it all, it's just not possible, there's not the right of way with have it all. So, they're asking us to make a decision. Do you want to have the separated bike ped and stay with that two-way median like we have now? Or do you want to get that median and combine the bike ped on the side? So, this very broad brush, certainly there's, there's landscaping elements to this, but as far as how the roadways are used, that, that's the difference between this. And one other thing I want to point out, Mayor, is on each one of those graphics, you see a top strip and a bottom strip. The top strip is where the roundabout was. That's the south end of the project. On the left side, yes, thank you. And then as you travel to the right, you go all the way to the north and you get up there to where Kelsey's is, I'm sorry, on the top side. You get up to where Kelsey's is up there and then you switch over to the bottom one. Yeah, there's Kelsey's and it takes over from there and takes you all the way up to the port. Thank you. And we'll zoom in on those as we go. Lexi's over here driving the computer, we can zoom in on areas of questions or concerns. We did have a chance to meet with, Lexi and I met with councilmembers this week and today with Councilmember Willis virtually, to discuss these plans and questions that we had. And there were a number of questions that were asked by Lexi to FDOT. And I would like to, if we could, Mayor, have Lexi just review those questions and answers because it'll answer a lot that this council came up with, Lexi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Um, so some of the questions that were posed to FDOT included the less dramatic changes or the less aggressive horizontal deflection, which is at the north end of the project, right near George King Boulevard. That's a traffic calming measure, so given the maintenance speed that comes on the corridor, so that 40 miles per hour, the deflection at that bulbout had to be reduced essentially, just for safety components. There's some physics kind of put into, into it. When you have cars traveling at a certain speed before some deflection and then after, there is, there's just some, you can't quite go as low as 30 or 35 right off the bat. You have to, um, slow it down gradually for that, for that 40 miles per hour design speed. Additionally, there were some questions regarding some changes to potentially some intersections for alternative 2.
You zoom into those as you're speaking to them?
For alternative 2, um, specifically just north of the, of the new signalized intersection. So, right around Long Point Road, Church Lane and Columbia Drive. One of the things that staff did is we did reach out to FDOT and request a signal warrant analysis for the Columbia Drive, Church Lane and A1A intersection. So, there's just a methodology that goes into figuring out whether or not a signal would be warranted at a certain intersection. Additionally, the access surrounding King Neptune, Long Point Road and that, that area, there were just some questions regarding some changes to, to allow for access, like a left-hand turn coming out of it. The, the answer to that is that it's, there's a possibility for discussion further on down the line. However, it really can't be confidently stated without a direction to move in. So, FDOT is, you know, they, they can work with us, as Todd said, and as they've, as they've confirmed. But there's just, there's no way to really definitively say what can or cannot go in certain spots of this project without understanding what direction council wants to move in first.
Yeah, and the, the concepts are, the, the discussions and questions are about, how can we potentially get the raised curb median and address the comments like Mr. Stroud said tonight about access management to Long Point into the residents there on King Neptune with, with them still preserving their ability for bidirectional turn in and out from all directions. So, with that, Mayor, that, that's all the questions we had for FDOT. And if you'd like to turn it over to them, they probably would like to respond to some of that additionally.
Todd, I don't know how much I can add to what you said because you kind of hit it out of the park, all of the major features between alternative 1 and 2. So, the only thing that I would add was, something I want to stress is the speed management and safety aspect of this project. So, the main takeaway is with alternative 1, while it does give the dedicated cycle track and sidewalk feature, what it lacks is that drastic change to your roadway that you were looking for. Slowing speeds down, making it more aesthetically pleasing, making it more walkable and high-speed. This section of A1A is very flat, it's sort of straight. With the five-lane section, it's kind of wide open. When it comes to speeds, it's all about driver behavior, right? So, some people think post a speed, but that's not the reality of how it works. It's a designer road and then based on that drive, how fast people are, that is what we posted. So, without making any major changes to the roadway with what it looks like today, we aren't effectively changing our roadway enough to drop those speeds. If you look at alternative 2, it's a very different roadway with that raised median. You do lose the cycle track, but you have a wider sidewalk that can accommodate both of your bikes and your pads. So, I just wanted to stress the, the safety and speed management aspect.
And Mayor, I did have a chance to talk with Councilmember Willis today and he came up with another alternative question that I apologize, Lori and team, you haven't heard this question yet. He referring to the residents of King Neptune and Evelyn Court, the Cape Gardens area back there. And Lexi, if you could circle your pointer around the cul-de-sac at the south end of Evelyn, right, right there, okay? If that Evelyn Court, that could punch through the International Drive, through that parcel that you would have to build International Drive, that could alleviate the concerns of that entire King Neptune, Evelyn Court, Cape Gardens area. Some 83, I think, of homes are back there. That, that could give them access to International Drive, which would possibly ameliorate all those concerns. As far as the other residents north of that, Long Point and Columbia, Alexi, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, no, Long Point could still access that southern route via Sunrise Court. They could still get there. So, all, all of them, Long Point and Cape Gardens could go to the International. Then if there's a signal at Columbia, fingers crossed about that. That takes care of some 330 residential units right there on Columbia. So, there's potential solutions for 430 residential units if, if we can get that. And I know you can't promise that tonight, but if you could look into it, I think we could get the median and those concerns addressed.
We are of course open to looking into it, it's not an option that we had considered before, but we're going to continue to work with the city and if we could find a way to make that connection work. Yeah, we're open to it.
Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, and I want to thank FDOT. I think for now, you could probably have a seat, maybe stay close and then, um, if you choose to. You don't have to stand any longer, but. You, oh, yeah, absolutely, yes. 35, correct?
Yes, and that's just because what I was just talking about is changing the road, the way the roadway feels and changing what's comfortable for your drivers on it. So, um, the plan is we're going to be designing this at 40, we will post it at 40. But when we change a roadway like this, I mean, we're reconstructing A1A with this project. Uh, we'll go out and do a speed study afterwards and that tells us what the drivers are actually driving. And that's when we can look at potentially dropping that posted speed to 35 or even lower, depending on how they respond to it. But with alternative 1, we're remaining with the five-lane section. It's unlikely that they would drop their current speeds, they're right now driving a majority of about 50 miles an hour.
Okay, thank you.
And before we sit down, Chad did want to remind me that we have initiated the request for this signal warrant analysis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to thank y'all very much again. I know I said it, as we've come a long ways and the citizens are very happy. And now we're having a healthy discussion about one or two. And thanks staff for everyone who's worked hard to get us to this, um, this level of transparency. You're really working with us and we know you don't have to do this. You could come in and build what you think is best. And so, very, if we're your customer-centric, whatever, intergovernmental relations, very happy. And the citizens that I've reached out to, we've got some great feedback. So, I want to summarize some of the things that I've heard. Really on two email campaigns, I read one prior to our last meeting that went out to Cape Canaveral residents, constituents that I try to keep in touch with. And then another one went out just yesterday reminding them about this. And summarizing two options, just saying, here it is from the city, we really need your feedback. Two, out of 206, I got 206 emails into me over those two and more. I, I could not get back further. I'd say 250 would be the most, but let's just, 206, 100 of them said that they liked alternative 1. So, almost 48%, almost 50% said that they had some positive comment about alternative 1. And I'll get into briefly some of the reasons. But alternative 2, 74, 36% of them, so not a big gap in between them. And again, the differences between the two aren't very. clear. Some were, but but it certainly wasn't like we saw with the roundabout. And then thirty-three folks did reply out of that batch, but they said, hey, we trust your judgment. We trust the engineers. We trust the council. Go forward. Make up your mind. I mean, if you, some of them made me laugh, and I certainly respect all of them. But the big point is, is one and two were close, and the big themes was reasons why they like number one is that separated bike lane. That was a big driver in there, especially with the rise of electric bikes and electric vehicles that every city is trying to tackle. Alternative one was the the concern for alternative two was, hey, is the maintenance going to be more expensive? The landscaping going to be more expensive? You know, taking care of those middle medians and extra green space, the U-turns that we've heard, the access to King Neptune, Long Point Road that has come up in other areas and how it's going to limit their mobility. And when I look at it and I listen to what FDOT's saying, the biggest thing that I think if you were to poll Cape Canaveral citizens and say, you only get to do one thing, what is it? It would be thirty-five miles an hour. And we understand where we are today is we're not in a position that FDOT had presented with the roundabout. But our best chance to do it is going to be alternative two in your professional opinion if there if that day comes. And I respect that a lot. And and I think that if we can figure out a way to make alternative two low-cost landscaping and maintenance, use drought tolerant, Florida friendly, whatever that we can help with those medians and and lower the speed limit. And then take that shared pedway like we have on Ridgewood or the one that alternative two brings and come back in and and maybe we can stripe it and work together on some sort of way to organize the folks in the same manner. And to me, it feels like we can address that if we have the pedway, if we if we can, it's easier to adapt into it than to come back out. And so I'm willing to live with those losses. And and I think that the majority of the residents would as well. We certainly have a challenge on our hands with electric bikes, electric scooters going up and down with with elders and walkers. And so that pedway doesn't scare me. I think we can figure that out in alternative two. And again, yeah, lowering the speed, but if we got hyper focused on these intersections and and if I understand, Lexi and and our city manager is FDOT is willing to try to meet these last little ends and pieces of these folks' intersection. The horizontal deflection coming in, trying to max that out, that was a big one is can we make sure that we're getting the same one that we would have gotten with the roundabout or work towards some solution? I think that that would be really big and making sure that if we can get a signaled intersection with the first one coming southbound is Central. Thuram is the next. Columbia is the third, and then this is the one international that we're all very excited about. That's a victory in itself, but to get two intersections working towards something there, I think we may see thirty-five miles an hour in ten years. I don't know, eight years, however this happens. So I take this decision seriously. I really want to make sure those folks, we work as hard as we can to not create any issues in that secondary lane that our city manager talked about, connecting to International, if that can happen. I saw you nodding your head as one person on that street. That's one alternative. And so I'm just talking out loud and working through it. I am ready to to move forward with one of these decisions and be continue to work with FDOT on these last end requests and make sure that the citizens hold us accountable to see that we did our best to get them done. So that's it. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Davis.
I also, with all the options or the like adding the roadway for King Neptune and things like that, just the different options that we would have on option two, I am for option two. I mean, unfortunately, whatever we do and however many options you present us, we are not going to be able to satisfy everyone a hundred percent. Nobody's, you know, everyone cannot be happy with this. But if we can find alternatives and and options and solutions, then I think we have to look at what's best overall for the city. And the big issue has been going to thirty-five miles an hour. So if that's something that can come out of option two, I I think that's a priority for the city. And so I would be going for option two.
Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
I am also for alternative two. I've I've always voted for safety and security. That's my number one issue. And I think we can take care of the other problem with the electric bikes because I really think that they belong in the street. And I I might come up with some agenda item very soon about this. And I think that that's just another issue, but I think the issue at hand is what do we want? I just think it's the safest option that we have. I feel the median will really help. And the suicide lane is really a dangerous issue. And with all the tourists and the busy, busy street that we have, we already have a lot of people in the city cannot make a left turn. And I could tell you, I live at Slone on the River. I do have a light. But the people who live in the trailer court, Cocoa Palms, the folks who live in Cape Shores, the folks who live in Costa Del Rio and Hidden Harbor, they cannot make a left turn onto A-1A most of the time, most of the time. And with the traffic increasing due to the port, it's a very difficult situation right now. And most of the people who live in those four places that I mentioned, and I've heard all the complaints, they make a right turn and they turn around. And sometimes I even have trouble getting out with the light. And I I have trouble crossing the street every day with my bike. And again, it's the problems with the people who live along the river. That's one of the things that we know. And I mentioned this at the transportation policy and intergovernmental affairs last Wednesday or Thursday, excuse me, when I went into Orlando. And the mayor from Pembroke Pines, when I said I almost get killed every day, he looked at me and he said, well, Angela, he said, you can only get killed once. Anyway, so option two, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kellum.
Yes, I I believe that option two would be good if we could accommodate the people that live in King Neptune and back that way. Long Point, and if we had the light at Columbia, that would be perfect. And a way for these people to get out and be able to make a left-hand turn without. And the medium, I think, would slow traffic down. Coming over that bridge into our city, it would look like you're coming into someplace. Not just a highway to Cocoa Beach. So I I think with those options, if we can get that road and if Mr. Stroud thinks it's a good idea and Joe, who lives on Long Point, I think that, you know, those people down there, if they had a way out to International Drive and could cross it to light, that would be perfect. And it would eventually get us to thirty-five. That's what we're striving for. So I'm open for option two.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis.
Yes, I'm in favor of option two if we can make accommodation for a light at Columbia and the access to International for our neighbors in King Neptune area. I think that would be in the long term, the best solution for Cape Canaveral. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Raymond.
Are you ready for a motion?
I have a final comment here. I just want to make and make sure that we're we're talking through this is that the resolution that we have, we just amended it with the roundabout is my goal is to give FDOT what they need to move forward, but we might want to consider specifying some of these in our resolution. But that's for us. And to say, here's where we did agree, and we've said a couple of things, thirty-five miles an hour is already there. We don't need to do anything in the resolution for that. But maybe we specify some signaled intersections, and these are just goals. These are things that we aspire, knowing that on this date is is the date we we say it too. So it's not like we're moving the goalpost after we kick, but it's just formalizing our hope. And that was just a comment that I I'm ready to move forward with one of these options, but in the future that might be something that that we could consider doing. So as of now, I'm not going to do anything on that, but are there any others from the public who wanted to speak on this issue? I know we've been at this for a long time, and I want to make sure it's every opportunity is given.
I just have one more question.
So just come forward and please speak directly into the mic so those can hear you.
Yes, Council, Arlo, Slone, Lake. I am all for proposal number two. And I think we need to move forward with this with the electric bikes and all the other electric equipment running up the sidewalks and so forth. That, you know, I went to the TPO three months ago in September, recommended we reduce the speed limit to ten miles an hour. Even if you had iPhone, I proposal one, where you have the separate the bikes and the pedestrians, that's not going to mean nothing. Them bikes still go flying down wherever they want to. So I'm all for proposal number two. And the safety, the left-hand turn going down with the divided road, safety is the utmost important. How many deaths are we going to count for before we make a decision? And the other thing is, we need to move forward with this before this money. If we don't move forward now, this money is going to be moved to some other project in the county. Then we're going to be sitting here holding our hands until we can get back, get the money back into the, okay? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service representing Cape Canaveral on the advisory committee. City manager.
Yes, recap what I'm taking down here. It seems like the council's about to make a motion and a vote. In addition to that vote on option one or option two, want a clarification, want to bring the resolution back again to amend to keep thirty-five miles an hour, add accommodating Cape Gardens and Long Point, signal at Columbia, stripe delineation bike and ped. And other than that, the resolution stays the same as last one approved. So I think that would be helpful for FDOT to bring that resolution back to them at a subsequent council meeting so they could see exactly if this is what we said, we want to be very clear what we wanted when we approved option that we are proving tonight.
Yes. And I I mean, the only other thing was low drought, you know, drought Florida friendly land, low cost, we value low cost, you know, creative innovative landscaping that allows low maintenance. That was a big concern. Yes, I think that's 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 important. And if we want to bring it back, I don't want it to, you know, be the the thing that it's it it's not fair to FDOT, in my opinion, to say, you know, the difference, but it is important that we say it. And I am going in this with eyes wide open. They have not guaranteed that they can do any of those things. And so we might want to talk about this some more, but I don't want it. If we pass a resolution, that is our request. That is our hope.
Yes.
And they're not in a visit. If if that's the understanding, then I I support that, yes.
The road that will go to International?
Looking into that, yeah. There's, by the way, there's another property in between Cape Gardens and the IBM Trust property. It's a very narrow strip of, I think, Lexi, was it twenty-five feet wide or fifteen feet wide owned by Canaveral Bay, right, the association? Yeah, there's a there's a strip of property right there where the hand is right there.
Oh, really?
Fifteen or twenty feet wide.
Oh, wow.
It's a flag lot. It's like a panhandle to that condominium association back there. So there's a little challenge with that ownership of that property.
I just have a question for the attorney. Is this resolution number twenty twenty-two dash sixteen? Are we going with amendments? Is that the one that we're going to pass or are we going to have a new resolution?
We're proposing a new resolution be brought to the city council at a future council meeting.
December twentieth, perhaps?
I don't know if it'd be ready by then, but I don't think that it matters if it comes in January, does it?
Well, the item that before us tonight is in my, we're approving alternative one or two.
Yeah.
That resolution, it, I think we take that separately. And if we want to if we want to make that motion after we can.
Well, this tonight, item eleven is is a discussion item. It's not a resolution.
Okay, so we if we don't, if we just need consensus on one of the alternatives?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that sounds good. Well, I think we have unanimous consensus on alternative two. Were there any other final comments? I think you had said something or one of you. I don't think so.
I think it would be helpful, Mayor, actually, if we did make a motion for council.
Yeah, so so let's let's take a vote.
So I I move that we accept alternative number two.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, and a second by Councilmember Davis to approve option two. Any more discussion? City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
You're still muted. There you go. Councilmember Willis? Four?
Yep, four.
Anyone who heard against, please raise your hand.
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
Four. Four, there it is, okay. Thank you. City clerk?
Yep.
Good. Okay, thank you. Motion passes five oh for alternative number two.
Thank you, Lori, Anthony and Chad.
Yes, thank you all very much. Now, at this time, if you, we want to make a a motion on a resolution, I think that's great.
So if I understand it correctly, the motion would be to ask staff to create a resolution amending the most previous, the most recent A-1A resolution to keep thirty-five miles an hour at accommodating Cape Gardens and Long Point, request for a signal at Columbia, a striped delineation between the bike and the ped, low-cost creative, low-maintenance landscaping. Any other changes?
And you can reword the low-cost, low-maintenance, yeah.
So moved.
I I think you got it all. Okay. Good.
Thank you. Well, there's a motion on the floor, so we'll have to call.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond and a second by Councilmember Davis. City clerk.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes five oh.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Councilmember Kellum, were you good?
Yeah.
Okay. International, Long Point, was that included?
The way I worded was add accommodating Cape Gardens and Long Point.
Yeah, if you go back and listen to the meetings, we definitely talked about that one. Yep, okay. And again, he's going to bring a proposed draft resolution. In that meeting, we can we can make changes and things like that. So, okay, great. So now at this time, we are at the consent. agenda. If there are any items this council would like to pull, please tell me those items. We will pull them and then I'll be looking for a motion to adopt the remaining. I, uh, I would, well, I, I've never done this. I, I would like to vote against I, uh, resolution number two or consent agenda item number two. Um, I'm happy to discuss it, but I'll, I would approve the consent agenda and against two.
I want to pull off item two.
I don't have to. If that's how we have to do it, yes. Um, I think there's a formal motion I'm missing that would allow me to say, um, I'm for, you know, the consent and against just the one. I don't know.
You just pull it, just pull it from consent for a separate vote.
Okay, I would like to pull item two. Thank you. And that was, that was it. Any other council members like to pull anything?
I'm fine.
Okay. Councilmember Willis, would you like to pull anything?
I'm good with it.
Thank you, heard. Councilmember Willis is okay with it? Looking for a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Items one, three, and four.
One, three, and four.
Correct. One, three, and four.
Right. Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to approve items one, three, and four, a second by council member Davis, city clerk.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Right, so agenda item two. I'm willing to postpone it, but I just, I need some more time on this and if I would like to, I, I, I'd like to postpone it because I, I I want to work on this some more, but if, if it means we have to approve it, I don't want to approve it tonight.
My problem with that, if I may.
Sure.
My problem with that is the Culture and Leisure Advisory Board spent a long time with this. And I think several meetings, actually. And my concern is it, it makes it very difficult to be on an advisory board. And then it comes to council and it's disapproved or it's postponed once again. I'm worried because we've had a couple of incidences recently where the Culture and Leisure Board spent a long time discussing an item and then it was disapproved or a different option was taken by the council. That's discouraging for our advisory board. We have to remember our advisory boards are composed of people who are volunteers and they're very dedicated to their community service. And I just want to make sure that we respect our advisory boards, especially Culture and Leisure, since I know for a fact that they spent a long time deciding on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I reply to that. Councilmember Raymond is, I agree, this was a three-two vote. And so, and because they spent a lot of time is, if they spent four meetings, I don't know how many they went through a lot of time or how you're saying that. I'm not ready to pass this through consent without discussion. Uh, so we can discuss it tonight. Um, or we can postpone it, but I would like to see some, some changes considered. And so let me ask this. City manager, if this does not pass, uh, move forward tonight, what does this do if it was taken up? No, we've got another meeting in December, too. So.
Going to ask Molly.
Which is rare for us. If it went to two week, or, yeah, two weeks, right, is our next meeting.
Molly, what would the impact be of delaying this decision for two weeks?
If we delayed the decision for two weeks, I would want to push out the, um, date that it would take effect so it gave more time for our staff and for our guests to get familiar and be informed.
Any other negative impacts?
Um, not really.
Thank you.
The fee schedule will just continue to be applied? The current one we have until which date?
Um, it, it's been the fee schedule for almost a decade or more, so it wouldn't change unless council approved a change.
No, I, I, sorry, the, the, uh, the rates for the community center.
The community center is not part of this one. This is just for the recreation complex at the Nancy Hansen.
Excuse me. Thank you.
But there was a, there's a proposed, um, effective date of January 1st, 2023. And what Molly's saying is we might want to push that back if this is getting delayed.
If that's not a problem, that would be my request.
I think, I think that pretty clear. I think maybe we need to discuss this and find out where the problem is, as far as you're concerned.
I want to understand why the, the vote went three to two on the Culture and Leisure Service.
I think, I thought that there were seven people on that Culture and Leisure Board.
Uh, we only have five at that meeting.
Only five, right now?
At that meeting.
Could you, do you under, could you explain that? Do you know why the vote was three to two?
There was a lot of back and forth. Um, one of the members, um, that had actually made a lot of recommendations that we followed with the, um, other facilities fee schedule, which you guys approved, um, what, August, I think, is when you approved it. Um, yeah, August 16th. We patterned this proposed fee schedule off of a lot of her recommendations and, um, she has since had some, you know, now that the facility's open and operating, she was kind of considering some different things. Um, it's hard to do any serious changes at the, the C5 because we just don't have the data to support, you know, going back to, say, free admission for residents at this point. You can't put, you can't put the worms back in the can once you do that without, um, some financial impacts. So there was a lot of back and forth. One of the things that was, um, that contributed to at least the three side of the vote for this is the fact that, um, currently they use the honor system. And if anybody has spent any time on our courts, especially as a regular visitor, you have probably seen, um, confrontations, arguments, not only on the courts, uh, arguments with staff because the hourly thing is almost impossible to enforce. And since this is a recreational facility, you have people that are enjoying it in a recreational capacity. They're not watching the clock. It's hot. Sometimes they take breaks. Sometimes they want to sit and chat. Ultimately, um, having, uh, an hourly structure doesn't work because it can't be enforced. And so frequently there are just normal day-to-day things, stopping and taking bathroom breaks, coming inside to get out of the heat, especially during the summertime, that interrupt that one-hour format. So with the, the one that they selected, the average player is playing for longer than an hour. And, um, you, the rate that they selected is actually the same as the current rate for two hours for all of the different categories, whether it be a senior, resident, adult, child, et cetera. So by going with a, part of their impetus, at least from my perspective, was the fact that for those that have been honest this whole time and have paid for two hours and have been truthful about their residency and their age, um, the price hasn't changed.
Yeah, and, and I probably, I will agree with you. I think the price should change. Um, I just wanted a little bit more time to dig into this one.
I'll tell you.
In two weeks, we're in a position where it would be a two-week delay, but I'm sensitive to those setbacks. If they're big, um, I'm just.
Mayor, there have been issues and I'm on the tennis court, so I can see what's going on, on the pickleball courts. And it is true that I see the same people playing for a full three hours. And sometimes we're there for more than three, well, three hours, but with the, with the tennis pro now, we do have a special rate what, because we're doing a lesson. And, uh, it is true that, um, the system's being abused. And it's, it's much stricter at other cities and at other facilities that I know of. But I have witnessed several issues going on there at the pickleball courts mainly. And, um, we have a lot of people that think that they can pay the resident rate when they are not residents. And when we go to use facilities at different cities, we pay the non-resident rate. And I have personally asked, which I'm not staying in my lane and I admit it, that I think people should show their ID because I'm offended when people are dishonest about where they live. And I know where they live and I see them getting the resident rate and I pay taxes in the city and this irritates me. Thank you. Because it is money that we're working with. And, uh, it needs to be fair. It needs to be fair to the residents and non-residents need to respect that. Thank you.
If, and if there is a policy change that needs to be made, um, I agree. If you're going to have a resident rate, um, then we might, whatever they need to, if they don't have the tools, they need to enforce it properly. If you need more from us, I would support that too, um, without fretting on anyone's rights. But we verify residency with the C5, right? So we have a procedure today.
That was our testing ground for this.
Okay, how did that go?
It ensures that residents and people that pay property taxes in the city are being honest about it and that people that do not pay property taxes and reside in the city do not get the, the resident rate.
Got it. It, but I think it's resident is if you live here. You don't necessarily have to own here.
You, you can either, for,
Do you have an ID that shows?
Have an ID that has your name on it. And if that name matches a property tax receipt.
Yes.
Or a utility bill receipt, because we do have seasonal people that will stay here for up to two and three months. Those people have a piece of paper saying where they're staying and that, that lease, that utility bill serves as, as proof of residency. Because that was also a challenge because the policy that's been in place since, uh, long before I got here was, um, and it was actually a question I asked on my first day because I came from the service industry. I'm like, I'm not allowed to card people? Then how do I know if they're actually, A, telling the truth about their age and B, the truth about where they live? And I was told that we operated under the honor system. And in the eight years I've been here, I can see that that hasn't worked.
Mm-hmm.
And I've watched and had to intervene and other staff members have had to intervene in disagreements on the courts. Um, BCSO has had to intervene in disagreements on the courts that literally start over a dollar.
Thank you for sharing that. Yep, that's important to understand. So yes, I, I would love two weeks to get this, I'm, I'll be ready then, but I, I want to go watch that meeting and understand and, and meet with you and, and understand a little bit more about the three-two vote. I think that I am trying to honor the boards and also honor the two who we appointed, who, you don't see this a lot. And so I think that sometimes the two have a good point. And maybe we agree with the three, but we want to fix the two. And I don't, I, I receive, you know, the summer, we all heard the summary and I get the gist of it. But if that meeting was recorded, which I think they usually are, the minutes are not very descriptive to understand. And I want to be able to go back and, that's my request. So if not, I don't want to support it.
My question, and I, and I say this respectfully, we ha- you know, we do votes up, you know, we vote three-two up here, boards vote three-two. So my, in my opinion, that's what they decided, that's what the vote was. And if we're going to sit there and question every vote that's three-two on every item, every topic, then, then I think that's ridiculous. We can't do that, that, you know, people question, we have a three-two vote, but it's still passed. That's a three-two vote. So are we going to question every three-two vote or why particularly this situation and these two people?
There's just not a lot of three-two votes. I think you can watch every three-two vote because you don't see a lot of them.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Mayor. I, I think that this is why our meetings are so long. We keep delaying item after item. I think that we need to move forward.
Let's move forward.
This is, this is on the agenda. I think that I would like to make a motion that we accept this.
Thank you.
And
Can I go ahead?
I would like to make a motion to accept this.
Councilmember Kellum?
Yes.
Um, I agree. I think, um, if we could just table it till the next meeting, um, it's not, uh, you know, a life or death situation. And it's not about, um, it's about honoring the boards and, um, in the campaigning that I just got done doing, um, there was lots of complaints from the residents on the fees. So to have an extra two weeks to kind of dig into this, I would like to, um, support that. Not that anything will change, but, uh, I just think if you push out the January to February would not be a, but there was lots of people complaining about the fees. So I would just like more time to look into it myself. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you, council. Any more questions? Councilmember Willis?
Uh, yes, um, I noticed in the minutes that a motion was made by one member to amend and send a revised fee schedule, but it died for lack of a second. So that means the, the, uh, other dissenting vote wasn't that convinced, in my opinion. But, uh, you know, that, having said that, I, I have no problem waiting another two weeks to look at it, but, um, it just seems to me that we should be moving forward with it. Two dollars doesn't seem that egregious. Thank you.
Then I recommend seriously pass it tonight. I will vote against it. If it's a compelling enough argument, there's a means we can take it back up again. You won't slow staff down and I'm not going to have my.
This is resolution number 2022 dash 30. Is that correct? Is that the form? All right, formally then, I will move that we approve resolution number 2022 dash 30.
I second.
All right, got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, second by council member Davis. Any more discussion, council? City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Against.
Mayor Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Councilmember Willis, I will respond when we hear you. We don't hear you yet. Looks like you're muted. Yep, there you go.
Um, I'm, I'm going to vote for.
Thank you. Motion passes three-two to approve as written. City manager, we good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Making sure. All right, that wraps up the consent agenda. Now, we will move on to items for act- oh, excuse me, public hearing. Oh, excuse me, public hearing. We are at 8:13 PM. Public hearing item is an ordinance number 2022. I'd like to ask our Mr. City Attorney to please read. If, or?
Ordinance number 2022, adopting amendments to the annual general funds, special revenue funds, agency fund, capital project funds, enterprise funds, and enterprise capital fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, provided for an effective date. This is second and final reading, also a public hearing item. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, City Attorney. All right, this is a public hearing item. Council, any questions for staff on this one? Technical things, any staff-related questions? Councilmember Willis, if you can hear, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Heard, thank you. No questions from Councilmember Willis. And none from Council. All right, this is a public hearing item. Anyone who would like to speak, please come forward. This is ordinance number 2022. Our city attorney just read it. Anyone at home that would like to speak, I'm going to go ahead and check. See if I have any, please raise your hand if you would like to speak. I will recognize you, unmute you, and provide you with three minutes. Give a couple more seconds to give you a chance to raise your hand for those of you listening. Saying none, we'll close public hearing. Back to the Council, looking for a motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt.
We, we had a motion-
My two seconds are too late, huh?
You're actually ahead of us in time, but got a motion by Councilmember Willis, and a second by Councilmember Davis to adopt ordinance number 2022. Last discussion, I don't think there's any. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Callum? Mayor Morrison?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
All right, ordinance number 2022, passes 5-0. Now we move on to items for action. At this time, we are appointing a voting delegate director and alternate to the Space Coast League of Cities. We know the routine here. I don't think we need to go into depth unless our city manager wants to explain it. We're thankful for those of you who served today. Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, thank you.
I would like to just, I will continue.
Did you say Callum or Raymond?
I'll second it.
Hold on, let's just make sure that we got everyone. Any other further comments, and then we'll go to a motion.
No, I would just like to comment. I really enjoy going. I enjoyed being the delegate. I did miss a few meetings beyond my control, but I think Angela is doing a great job. She's very involved. And at this time, with the health of my husband, I really can't do that. So I agree and support Angela and Kim Davis as both the delegates.
I have one comment to make.
Yes.
I think Councilmember Callum, you can still be the advocate on the advocacy committee. And, you know, if you would do that, that would be great. I think we do need that that position filled to be the advocate, if you're able to do that.
I have talked to Mindy a couple times, and I'm going to talk to her at the next meeting and make a decision that day.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like to, the action item is to appoint a voting delegate, which Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, and the alternate would be Councilmember Davis. That's what we all agree. Councilmember Willis? You okay with that? Any discussion? I am, I heard. Or did I want to hear? I am. I heard. Councilmember Willis, are you, any comments or discussion?
No, no opposition, no discussion.
Okay, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that Mayor Pro Tim Raymond be assigned to the Space Coast League of Cities, and then Councilmember Davis is the alternate. Second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, a second by Councilmember Willis. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Callum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you both. Congrats. We appreciate you representing Cape Canaveral as always. There's a lot happening, and we are all pulled in different directions, so it takes a team. Thank you.
Thank you, and I feel honored. I think that it's a very important job, and I'm always the one ready to speak. And I will probably speak at the delegation once again about home rule and about the importance about cities being able to keep doing what they do and without any other interference. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now we can move on to item number seven, item for action, which is to appoint a council member as the 2023 Voting Delegate to the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization Governing Board, representing the North Beaches Coalition. Councilmember Willis is now, right?
Yes.
Same routine here.
I would recommend that Councilmember Willis continue on this board. He's done a great job. He's very involved. I believe he enjoys it. So I would recommend that he continues.
And I agree. I second that.
And I'd like it, doing it this way. So we got a, is that a motion?
Sure.
Because it's going to be much more expeditious.
And I second it.
Okay. So got a motion by Councilmember Davis, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to appoint Councilmember Willis as the 2023 Voting Delegate. Is there any discussion on this? Any questions? Councilmember Willis, I'm assuming you're willing?
Yes, I'd be honored to do it.
Thank you for doing that. There's nothing else. We can go ahead and call the vote. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
For.
Councilmember Callum?
For.
Mayor Morrison?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Motion passes 5-0 to appoint Councilmember Willis, 2023 Voting Delegate for the Space Coast TPO. Thank you, thank you, sir. We appreciate you, and got a lot to talk about there, so. All right, this is item number eight, to reappoint the Resilience Engineering Services Manager Alexis Miller as the city's representative on the Space Coast TPO, Technical Advisory Committee, and city resident Arland de Blau as the North Beaches Coalition Delegate on the SCTPO Citizens Advisory Committee. So, city manager, any comments or anything on this?
No, just only that they have my full confidence, both of them, and I think they will continue to serve well. They're both willing to.
Thank you. Please go. And would you check on her? Okay, we're going to take, let's do a five-minute recess, okay, immediately. Nikki, what do you need, honey?
I just want to make sure she has the resources she needs.
I need someone to drive her home.
Well, the police-
No, but she may-
Yeah. Well, I'm happy to obviously. I don't know.
Councilmember Willis, can you hear us? This, we're not doing any city business right now. Just let you know, we're going to be reconvening in a few minutes here. Thank you all. We're okay with moving forward. Anyone get a message from Councilmember Callum saying that she wanted, to me, she was gone and she is not returning? There's no, I haven't either, so.
She may, she may.
Yes. If she comes back, she has the right to do that, but we're going to continue city business. Yep, okay. So we go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Thank you. All right, appreciate everyone's patience, flexibility, and wish the absolute best, whatever's happening. Thoughts and prayers are out there. We are thank you to reappoint, yes, Resilience Engineering Services Manager Alexis Miller. And also, I've already read this, Arland de Blau is the North Beaches Coalition Citizens Advisory Committee, SCTPO. Council, any? Our city manager said to be fully supported. I think we're ready to move.
I think they're doing a great job.
Yes, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Raymond, got a second by Councilmember Davis. We do hear you loud and clear, Councilmember Willis. City Clerk, please call the vote.
Hold on. Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Callum? Mayor Morrison?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
For.
Councilmember Willis?
For.
Right, motion passes three or four zero. Thank you. Now we move on to item number nine, to consider the proposal from Kim Lee Horn and Associates in the amount of $15,000 for the completion of an engineering parking analysis and authorization. And the amount of $15,000 for the completion of an engineering parking analysis and authorize the city manager to execute the same. This is a item that city manager, anything you want to address here?
On August 16th, 2022, city council heard from a significant number of residents regarding the repeal of commercial parking restrictions for a business located in the 100 block of Jackson Avenue due to an ongoing code enforcement action. As a result, the council placed a stay on all code enforcement actions dealing with the city's parking regulations. That stay is still in effect. At the same meeting, the council approved the subsequent motion to send this item to Planning and Zoning Board for recommendation on revised parking requirements. The council limited the scope of their request to restaurant and bar parking. On October 12th, the Planning and Zoning Board heard this item and the board voted to request the council approve funding for a parking analysis. That's attached, there's attachment two for parks, for bars and restaurants. To this end, staff secured a proposal from Kim Lee Horn for the completion of an engineering parking analysis. The fee is $15,000. The work will take about 60 days to complete. The fee includes an evaluation of best practices from around the state up to five. Proposed ordinance revisions, attendance at an initial staff kickoff, subsequent review meetings, presentation of findings to the board and council. That is attachment three. Kim Lee Horn is the city's consultant, competitive negotiations, JACCCNA, and they're on the list. And they're particularly familiar with the city's transportation network related to the Presidential Streets Master Plan, the ongoing engineering traffic study related to golf cart operation in the city. And I see that we have Planning and Zoning Board Chair Lamar Russell here. If there's any questions from the board perspective or his personal experience as well, sir.
Thank you. Council any questions for staff or Russell is here, thank you for being here. Councilmember Willis, I'll start with you, any questions?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. I think you were throwing it to me, but I would like to see that we have this study, but in order to ensure that we have considerations for neighborhood bars and restaurants and protect the city's interest against any future actions.
Okay, I'm not sure you understand what he.
I believe what he's saying is he's in support of the expenditure of $15,000 for Kim Lee Horn to do the study to protect the city's bars and restaurants and safety of people for parking.
Okay, got it. So you're okay with, with, with this parking analysis and authorize the city manager to execute it? For 15,000 for those reasons, understood, okay, thank you, counsel?
One of the things I was concerned about, I think at the lot, one of the last meetings was discussed about doing away with all parking restrictions in the city. I don't know that, how we could do that. And I, you know, again, that could hold the city liable. So I would say that I would go ahead and do this only for the fact that it would cover the city and for any liability and for any decisions that we make, we could base it on the, the outcome of this assessment.
Thank you. Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Raymond, anything in this?
I'm in a quandary about this. I worry about sending the wrong message. I feel that so many of the other bars and restaurants, I'm thinking in terms of what Preachers, Kelsey, Sage, Thai Thai, what they had to go through in, in order to get the proper number of parking spaces. So there's a fairness issue in my mind. In addition, it was recommended to Ellie Mays that she should try to formalize some type of agreement with Circle K to have some parking spaces there right along A1A. And that has not been done by the owner there. And I worry about every time we have to make a decision, do we have to have a study? Now, those are just my concerns and I could be in a minority here. But when we're looking at budgets and we try to keep within a budget as a family and as a city, I, I worry about these things. And we have parking codes for our city. Maybe they have not been updated, I'm not sure. But as I said, I'm concerned about the fairness issue because I know what some of these other bars and restaurants went through. And I do understand that Ellie Mays is a different animal. It's just different. And I understand that part, that most of the people do walk or ride a bike. So I'm fully aware of that.
I can agree with you. My first thought would be that I would keep it status quo because of what the other businesses have done in, in the past and what they've had to pay and, and the accommodations they've had to make. That was my first thought. But, you know, again, if whatever decision we make may be challenged. So I don't, you know, my, my, my thought was that if we had this study, that, that might help the city as far as the liability.
Perhaps our gentleman from planning and zoning can explain to us, please?
So if you'd be willing to, we certainly appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor, while he's coming up, I just want to add that we do have a representative from Kim Lee Horn on the line. Kelly Klepper is here if there are questions for him. It's Kelly, Kelly Klepper?
Thank you. What is the question?
Are we sending the wrong message? I were, and is it really fair? We already have parking codes and restrictions for our city. And those have been worked on and reworked over and over. And as I said, some of the restaurants I know had a very difficult time with this because it depended upon the tables and the number of parking spaces. And I just said, are we sending the wrong message? That if somebody complains or brings a crowd into city council, you know, they seem to get their way, perhaps, I don't know. I'm just curious and I'm just wondering about. And how did you come to the decision that we need to have a study? Thank you.
Well, the planning and zoning board has done this before years ago. When we set out the requirements for bars and restaurants. And I don't know how long you've lived here, but I lived here long enough to remember the time when we had a bar on every corner. And after a launch, it was like Dog's Dodge City. So we came back and we cleaned it up when we had a chance during the late big Apollo layoff. We cleaned it up and we made sure the bar couldn't just be a bar, it served booze and that's it. You had to have parking. And we, we worked it, worked with that a long time. The PNC board did it. We didn't have a consulting engineer. We just laid out the requirements and they served us pretty well for the last few years. Okay, here we are. Oh, been there, done that, so here we are. You want us to study the situation again? We'll, whatever you want us to do. If you don't want us to do it, we'll draw the request. If you do want us to do it, we would say, okay, it was hard to do the first time and it was dissatisfaction because of where we have evolved to. And cities changes, or it changed, it's just changed. We said, well, if we're going to do this again, let's get a professional opinion and what the consulting engineer can do. Instead of just us board meeting or sitting and tossing ideas around. The consulting engineers can reach all over the country around other municipalities, see what's happening, what people are doing in Miami or Mims or Las Vegas. I mean, anything we want to get, we can get it and look at it and apply it to our town. So we think that an engineer would, or consulting business would give us a good set of ideas to work from. And that's all, we don't, we don't go into this with any preconception. I, what you said about this problem, who has the problem with Circle K or some parking thing? First, I've heard about it. Okay, fine. That'll get mixed in, included if it's, we'll talk about it. And if we come back to you with the answer after we've got our consulting engineer consultation done and we come back with an answer and you don't like it, that's fine, we'll take it back and we'll work it some more. We won't give you something you have to swallow and you don't want it. I hope, well, this is not easy. It's not easy. So if we're going to do it, let's get professionals to do it, look at it. And then we, the PNC board will chew on it and pull the trigger on it. And we'll put it in front of you and if you're satisfied with it, we'll go forward. And if you're not, we'll take it back and work it some more. That's the best I can do for you from that.
Thank you.
Thank you, does it?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chairman Russell? Councilmember Willis? Chairman Russell is here, if you have any questions for him?
Well, I just wanted to know if in this consulting study, if they would possibly be coming back with ideas that relate to high density areas, neighborhood areas where we could classify certain other businesses or bars, restaurants in a different classification than along the main corridor of the city where you have to drive to them. And I think if we go with the consulting, they may bring us back options that show a differentiation based upon where an establishment might be.
I'm not sure what you, what you even mean. I've listened carefully, but I don't understand. Parking, there's ain't never been enough parking in, it can have them. Too many cars, too many people, too much business and not enough real estate, okay? So that's what we're trying to do in, in the end, is figure out how to get everybody accommodated to park or to attend businesses.
Now, having said that, Mr. Willis, what was your question? Well, I'm just merely stating that, do you expect them with the consulting arrangement to bring back examples that deal with more of a neighborhood setting versus a particular commercial setting? Like A1A is, is predominantly a commercial setting with the bars and restaurants along A1A. Whereas you have the Mexican restaurant in, on North Atlantic and Ellie Mays, which tend to sit back more into a residential area.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you want us to consider different classifications of businesses? And their parking requirement?
Yes, more or less with where they reside. Because they seem to be more in a residential setting, is my point.
Then, okay, we, we can take that and mix it in with everything else. See what we do with it.
Well, I'm just hoping that the consulting would bring back some options if those parameters are presented to them.
Well, at, at, right now tonight, I'm not sure what, what parameters we would even give the consulting engineer. But like we always said in NASA, if you don't have a solution, keep on working.
Good enough.
We'll just, we'll work it.
Yes, well, thank you, I don't have any questions. I do appreciate you being here tonight and representing those, that board. And it, it makes sense, there's no doubt or disagreement. I think that if we went to a consultant, a professional, the work product that they would provide for us is better than respectfully, by your own admission, what y'all worked up.
It would be better than what we could dream of and discuss. Now, having said that, you got it. Kim and Avril is fortunate, it has a highly, highly educated population. There's no problem we can't solve if we put our minds to it.
I believe that.
And I think the right way to go tonight is put our minds to it and say, okay, we will hire some smart people. It will get all the information that they have and have access to. And, and let them listen to us, we'll have a meeting before they go off and do what they do. Come talk to us, we'll put in our, what we heard tonight. And we'll go off and study it, we'll come back and talk about it, we'll present it and we may study it again.
Thank you. I did have a question or two for city manager, maybe you can help, or Davis. Was this, actually, Kim Lee Horn's here, the, the proposal, was this kind of the minimum? Or was there another service level that would do a more cursory conceptual deliverable in the scope of work? Yeah, I guess how was this priced? They, they looked at their requests and they said, hey, I mean, obviously, we see the proposal, but was there something scaled down?
And just before you start, I did receive a message from Nikki Callum. She said, all is well, without wanting to give specifics, all is well, and she apologizes.
Thank you, councilmember.
No, that's a tough situ, my, we're going through that with my fathers and I know a lot of people are, have to deal with this, a very tough issue, so. Um, yeah, mayor, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking. What, what I can, I think what you're asking is that, yes, we, we deal with Kim Lee Horn on a lot of traffic-related items, studies for, for, for the city. So they're, they're aware of what our needs are, what our situation is. And, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Klepper, who's on the phone this evening. If, if there's any specific questions for him, he's available. But we did try to keep this to a minimum to really address the, what I understood the council was looking for would be some options on how to address commercial parking for bars and restaurants. And then obviously, there's a process that needs to be followed. We need to, we need to go out and see what other communities are doing, what we call best practices, and how those can be applied to the city. And those services would be provided by Kim Lee Horn. They, they are a nationwide firm that has offices all over the country and they deal with these issues on a daily basis. And they provide these services and, and products related to what we're talking about this evening. So they're, they're a great company to be working with, they are on our CCNA list. And so frankly, their, their bid came in a little higher than that. We threw a, I'll call it, I'm not sure we can call it.
Value engineering?
Value engineering, I'm not sure we really did that, but we, and we did the version of value engineering to get their price down a little bit. But this, the study is focused strictly on bars and restaurants, so it's a fairly focused study. So that, that helped to bring the cost down as well.
Dave, on, on that point, can you verify, Mia, perhaps you can call up the contract? And looking on page two.
Of the contract?
Of the contract. Page two, task three, it's on your screen there. It says, based on the findings of task two, Kim Lee Horn will draft a technical memo summarizing the proposed commercial parking ordinance amendments. And throughout this, what I'm seeing is all commercial parking ordinance amendments. I'm not certain this document specifically limits to bars and restaurants.
Yeah, it, it, it does. I've, I've, although the wording, and Kelly, Kelly may want to respond to this. He and I did speak about this exact issue. And Kelly indicated that he had revised the.
Well, what would the price be to do all commercial?
Is Kelly, is, is, can you, mayor, is Kelly on the list of, of participants?
Earlier, I did not see a name, I'm looking at attendees. No one's on attendees and staff, I can see.
Okay.
And then.
Councilmember Willis.
Mia, if you could go to page one, under project understanding? That's all right.
I just have a question.
Oh, please, yes.
Well, you're looking. Do we have a problem with commercial parking? I mean, other than the bars and restaurants? I mean, other than the bars and restaurants? I don't see that our commercial areas have any parking problems.
I'd say in general, no, but our specific direction from the council was bars and restaurants.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and my point is on the project understanding, which is on the screen in front of you, there are four points, and none of them specifically say bars and restaurants.
I hope it's commercial parking, because I agree. I would like to approach it. Maybe we did just say bars and
Oh, yeah.
Obviously, the subject property was a bar, but
If you go back to the minutes, I included the minutes.
Was more broad.
Okay.
But if we don't need, we don't need a study about commercial parking other than the bars and restaurants, why would we pay for that when there's not a problem at this point?
I agree. So I guess that's what we can verify.
Thank you.
Is it, yeah.
Commercial parking requirements are tied to the square footage of business. It's pretty hard to do anything else in parking requirements for commercial. You can study it, but I haven't seen anything that's gonna make it better. You need more real estate to make things better, and we don't have it. The overall solution, and it's worked pretty well for just neighboring businesses to cooperate with one another and allow one another's customers to park in their properties. And those are just kind of ad hoc, private agreements. And I didn't want to ask a question about that. I'm sensing that you want us to put into this study some business, some feature of private agreements between neighbors?
No, no, it just had been suggested to me to talk to the owner about this possibility. It had been suggested to me to talk to her about this possibility, to make a formalized agreement with a lawyer, with Circle K. But she hasn't done it. So, no, I don't think it should be part of the agreement or the study. This was, that was just a sidebar. Thank you.
Okay. Dave, you're working, okay, we're hanging off. Dave's working on sidebar there.
Yeah, the city manager brought up a good point, and he's, I think we all agree that clarity there is good. Was there anything else?
Bars and restaurants? That's it? Bars and restaurants?
If, yeah, if that's the, the, I want to make sure the price lines up to the scope of work.
Well, it goes without saying that anything you want P and Z board to do, that's our job. We do homework with council. We'll try our best to keep you from studying the topic. We'll give you the best information we can go and get. That's our job. So whatever you want us to go scrape up and talk about and cook it and stir it and debate it before you give it to us, before we give it to you, we will do that. Whatever you want us to do.
Thank you.
David, you started to get a hold of Kimley Horn. What are we doing next?
I got some, I can, I do have some comments, so I'd like to still take advantage of this time while he's getting this important point. Y'all need some time. I want to make sure we're all working together. So we've got, I agree with Mayor Tim Raymond that you know, my thought, and we've done this in the past, is, and it's probably the same playbook that you did, is we look at another city's policy who maybe have funded their own study, and you try to find the best practice out there. I agree that that's a study on a different community with different needs, and you know, you're never going to get the same product, but to find comparative policy that our city attorney maybe already has half-baked or somewhere in the works with another city he's served would be my preferential starting point, have P and Z help us with that. And then if we, that's too scary to us to dive into, knowing that another community does it, well, then a consulting study, maybe it's warranted there, but
It's not a problem. We've done this kind of thing before. The attorney and city manager, we've done these projects before where we go and look at what other communities, municipalities are doing. And where we do it the most is when we're writing new ordinances. We always go and see what those other ordinances do, what people are doing, how they do it. Sometimes you find the nugget in a whole bunch of stuff. You don't want to do all they're doing, but you want to pick that nugget out, because we can use that. And that's what you do when you put that net out there and get all the information in. We're looking for nuggets.
Yes, and I think having a some consulting, even hourly, on the work product or P and Z, I think the council would probably go for that to say, would Kimley Horn come in and help? Hey, we found some comparative policy. We're working this way, and I know if they want to help us. But I'm willing to go down this road and and without a consulting survey. That's
We'd, the P and Z board would rather have a consultant
I understand.
We think it makes good sense to go and see where those nuggets are. Go find them and bring it out and bring it to us. And we, the P and Z board, the individuals don't have the ability to do that. Unless we just get on the phone and start searching that way or on the internet. But no, a consulting engineering service is the best way to gather all the information you need. Then you can chew it. You can digest it, spit out what you don't want, and keep the nuggets.
Thank you. Any more questions?
No, I was gonna say, by having, by having Kimley Horn, I would think that would also speed up the process, you know, where we're not dealing with this months down the road as well.
I guarantee you, you're gonna get a better work product.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of whether the council wants to spend the money and go down that path.
There's no debate that we're gonna get a better work product. I mean, let's hope so.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that's the issue. I don't know if this is I just, I agree with what Mayor Tim Raymond said. I think we could go, like we've done all others, we've looked at comparative policy. We should, and it, like you said, it's worked. I mean, I would get excited about a study. It'd be best, it'd be great to see what they'd bring back. I just don't feel like that's the priority here for such a niche. I'd rather go forward with the way we've done it and adjust. Have we ever touched this parking code since you've been serving? Have we ever relaxed it, I mean, gone? I know we voted every stripe parking dimension, square footage density.
We've had minor changes along the way. That's, that's also possible. So when you have a consultant bring you the a good product, and we come forward with the end outcome, we can always go back and adjust it. We can always go back and let the feather shine. Remember how we did that? We had the feathered signs, and then the epidemic came, and we relaxed all the regulations. You can have all the signs you want, because it helps merchants. Brought it back, tightened it back up. Put it back the way it was in the beginning. Seems to be working. I hadn't heard any really disturbance about it. So that's what we'll do with this. We'll get a product. We'll do what we do with it. We do, we adjust.
Thank you.
What I call it is driving it around. Do this, we're gonna enact it, we're gonna drive it around for six months. And then we will test it again.
Thank you. Okay, anything?
I believe Dave has Kimley Horn on the phone there, Dave. If you can provide that answer about the scope of the service.
Kelly, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, sure, Kelly.
Okay, Kelly, the, as I understand the question to be that the scope that the council is interested in or indicated an interest at their last meeting where this was discussed was to focus on bars and restaurants. And the, I guess, a review of the scope that's in front of the council this evening still references more of a larger umbrella of all commercial uses. I was wondering if you could address, is that specifically the project understanding?
So let me make sure you have the 21st revision in front of you, Dave?
No, this is the October 4th.
Yeah, the only reason I'm throwing that out is because there was the October 4th, and then we revised it based off of the guidance from council. And then I sent you all a revised from the 21st, and there were specific references to and not only the project understanding under number one with respect to bar and restaurant parking standards.
Right.
Number three, we identified that. And then also throughout, like, task two and task three, we made sure to, you know, if we say, you know, the evaluation of commercial parking ordinance specifically with regard to and limited to bars and restaurants.
Yeah, I knew we had talked about that. So, okay, well, the council has the, does not have the latest version in front of them then.
Okay.
We're meeting in two weeks.
This October 4th, 2022, I have it.
We have, there's a later, there's a later scope dated in November.
As we have the older version. There's evidently another one out there.
Oh, so there's another version after October 4th?
For it focused, because we caught that issue when we were reviewing this version, and there's a new version that focuses on bars and restaurants.
And is the cost change on that?
The cost, Kelly?
What was the cost on the one that you're looking at, Dave?
Fifteen?
Actually, I think I've got a typo in here, because we did not, we, I think we upped the number of peer reviews, but we did not adjust the fee, which I need to do that and get you a revised back. It should have gone down.
Mayor, based on this information, I'd move
What should it come down to?
Do you have a, do you have a idea of what this number would come down to, sitting here right now?
I was trying to go back, because I thought I had, I thought I had put in there like 10, just because it was so limited, a maximum of 10.
Mayor, would it be appropriate to move to postpone this to the next meeting?
Yeah, I think we have to.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Hold on just a second.
We'll let him, Dave finish, make sure. I think we're, do we have any more questions for Kimley Horn? We want to be respectful of their time, and we're good? Okay. So back here to us.
It would be appropriate, I believe, to move to postpone this to the next meeting in December, where we'll have the proper attachment this time.
Yeah. We'll have to see how this happens.
Did we get a price of what it should be?
No, but I definitely, he's, Kelly's looking at it. Kelly, you don't happen to run across that new price, do you? Okay, we'll, we'll have it for the
Not even, I mean, it's 15,000, not even a guess?
But he said it would come down, right?
Okay.
Maybe 10, okay.
Well, I just think that we should know this number, and if it was, if it was a big range, we're talking about 15.
Is he off the phone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will vote to postpone.
I have one more comment. We only have one serious problem. Is that correct? I just want to, I just want to clarify this. We only have one problem right now in the city. Ellie May's tiki bar. Is that correct?
I think there's, that was clearly a problem. I think there's problems, but we might have different definitions of problems.
I can tell you that we don't have any other, there's no other code enforcement, outstanding code enforcement cases regarding.
I'm just, I'm just curious. We're just talking mainly, it is Ellie May's tiki bar, correct?
We did have an inquiry or concern about bar parking related to the American Legion. That was several months ago also.
They have that adjoining lot.
That was the problem, and that, the code, the result of that code enforcement investigation revealed that they couldn't use that lot that way. And Dave, you may have more information about the result of that than I do, but I believe they're not currently using that lot.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well, that they were trying to get an agreement with the owner of the lot, but he's been, let's just say they haven't been able to come up with a
Okay.
Agreement.
I just, I wasn't aware of that. And that's why I'm asking the questions. I just wasn't aware that anyone else really had a problem. Okay, that
I think it's very focused in bars and restaurants. I think those are the main
All right, thank you.
Issues.
Yeah, I think the I would like to move forward on, you know, well, what's the, today, we put a, what's the enforcement procedure under the current state for Ellie May's? We put a stop?
Yes. That was, the council had two motions that
And is that perpetual?
Until rescinded.
Okay, so it'd take a majority of the council to rescind?
Yep, it's a, we officially stay the code enforcement action.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so until the council takes action?
We're staying that code enforcement action.
Okay.
I just have one quick question. We talked about the liability for the city as far as if we used Kimberly Horn. If we didn't use Kimberly Horn and we went with, you know, what our zoning, our board had found out, thank you. What is the difference in liability? I mean, if for some reason, say Ellie May's didn't like what our board came up with or whatever, what is the difference in the liability versus having the professional one versus having the recommendation of the board? Is there a big difference?
Mayor, I'd like the city attorney to apply on that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the issue before you is a legislative issue for the city council, right? The adoption of an ordinance, changing policy. So generally, for this type of ordinance, it just, you need to have some sort of, they call rational basis to it, you know, support your ordinance. You know, in this particular case, you know, parking, transportation issues are, you know, there are professional experts. And I think that was the planning and zoning board's point, is that they wanted to get a professional expert, professional opinion, because that's what they do for a living. So in terms of having the best information available, you know, on this type of issue, I would say, you know, relying, relying on a professional, you know, expert is helpful. It's unlike, however, the I shouldn't say that, you know, when you're dealing with parking, it will impact traffic. There's going to be safety issues involved. So I would say the standard of reliance is heightened, where, you know, the professional experts will, will help guide you to try to mitigate against any, you know, adverse impacts that could cause safety issues. So, you know, that's, that's important from a, always important from a liability, you know, standpoint. But, you know, this is a matter of policy, so there's a broader range of discretion for the council. So I can't tell you that not having a professional engineer give you advice exposes you to more liability at this juncture. I can tell you, though, their professional experience and opinions will make you better informed to make better decisions. And I think that was where the planning and zoning board was going on this type of issue. I don't know if that helps or not, but if you recall, though, the golf cart, the golf cart situation was different, and I don't want to confuse the two. Oh, they have the council be confused. There was a statutory obligation on the golf cart statute that the council make a determination that the roadways were safe for golf carts.
Right.
Okay, that is a little bit different than what we're dealing here with onsite parking requirements for restaurants and bars. So from a liability standpoint, it's, I think it's a little bit different.
Another thought of mine, and not that we would not respect, and what decision the board came up with, I think if we had a professional opinion from Kimberly Horn, other business would be, businesses would be reluctant to go against. I mean, they would understand that this is the park, this is what we've decided, what you've decided. And then we would have less issues from other, other bars and restaurants, and we wouldn't have to go through this again. Does that make, did I, did that make sense with that? Yeah.
Uh, that goes to my point of being
Yeah.
well-informed, you know, having a solid basis in which to make your, make your decision.
Yep.
People will always disagree, but, yeah.
Remember, one other point I'm thinking about, remember when the fire chief came, he said, a, a lot of these were, a lot of this was determined by the fire code also. That's what he said when he came.
Right. You know, fire hydrants and, you know, no parking zones and things like that, definitely those issues come under the fire code. Terms of establishing the requisite number of parking spaces under your zoning code, fire, the fire code's not going to address that issue. And that's really the rub, right? It's how many parking, onsite parking spaces should be required for, neighborhood restaurants and bars has been the focus. And the, the dilemma is a lot of those neighborhood restaurants and bars are on very constrained parcels of land. They're not on A1A. They bleed into residential zones um, or make a transition into residential zones and there's just not a lot of land. So under the current code, if there's not enough land for onsite, the code says, well, you can kind of look elsewhere to have some sort of like co-parking arrangement offsite. That's where the circle K comes in with respect to Ellie Mays. I mean, they're a constrained site. And under the current code, they gotta have X number of parking spaces. And if they can't put them onsite, they gotta find something close by. And, um, you know, it's, it's be interesting to see how a professional would kind of look at it, given all these constrained sites. Cape Canaveral is very unique in that, in the, in that respect on restaurants and bars. I don't want to speak out of turn, Dave, but I mean, I mean, that's kind of my take of the, of the council's discussion, our discussion, discussion with planning and zoning board.
Yeah, I'd just like to add one thing at the PNC board. There was some, a little bit of confusion about the fire, fire department's role in this. And the fire department's role is really related to occupancy loads. And that really doesn't drive parking standards and parking requirements. That, that, those standards are spelled out in chapter one-ten, our zoning ordinance. In particular with bars and restaurants, they're driven by seats, number of seats. That drives the parking needs. Whereas the occupancy load, the fire department has a different calculation for that. And that really is a separate consideration that, from our parking standards.
Yeah, I believe that got conflated that night.
Yes.
Because, um, I believe there were council members, one or more, that said, just make them comply with the fire standards. That should be enough. And that statement was in relation to the occupant load. You could theoretically have a building with zero parking spaces that had an occupant load of a hundred. And the fire department's not looking at parking spaces. They're looking at the building itself and how many people can be in that building. So it, it's short-sighted to say, just make them follow the fire department occupant mode. You're being blind to the parking problem. So what Dave is saying is our code, our zoning code says, here's what you look at for parking that the fire department's not looking into. You have to have one parking space for every three seats per restaurant or bar. And that's what the code has been for the twenty years that I've been here. That hasn't changed. Um, and as, um, council mentioned, uh, Kelsey's, when they expanded to the preacher bar, they had to go through a significant expenditure to purchase more property, do a site plan revision, get proper permits and land development permits to add more parking around that whole building just to comply with that code. Um, in this case, with the Ellie Mays restaurant, sure, it's, it's, it's years later. It's a different time. It's a different location. Uh, and then they asked the question, must we do what they did? Must we spend that money in essence? Must we, must we do all that? Or can we look at changing the code? And that's where the councils, I think appropriately said, this is a good time to look at the code. Maybe we should look at the code. And here we are, um, on the eve of making the decision to look, having a professional look into that code and give us those nuggets of wisdom that we might pluck and put into our next revision of this ordinance. So we just need to wait until we get the proper.
I have a number. I mean, uh, Kelly's come back and said that based on those discussions we've been having this evening, his understanding, he thinks he could on a, and focusing on bars and restaurants, he goes that, not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
I'm not fixing ten?
Ten.
So I'm assuming sixty-six percent of the city is bar or restaurants? Because if it, fifteen thousand for the whole commercial district, why is he only taking off five thousand? We ha, we can't take action on this.
Right.
I think we should put this to rest and move. Um, it's, well, it's not about the, I, my heart is, I hate that our city staff has to deal so much in parking altogether. I want to, I think we've spent too much time on parking and the trend is to get out of the business of it. I've said that and I still feel that way. And so I think, Chairman Russell and their, their wisdom, and I've read his book, they came out and they said, no street parking. And that was really smart. You changed Cape Canaveral for the better to know that our firefighters, our first responders, the streets are open. We should go up, keep that. That's great. There are some streets that are wide, like, you know, parts of section where you might be able to pull off some. But either way, I, I like keeping the roads open. I think the citizens like that. It's a safer community. But what happens on that private property parcel? I just want to get, like, our, our code enforcement officers are writing tickets and for, for this stuff, it's just not a major issue. And the scenario that somebody's going to get hurt is you force them to park across the street to come to your restaurant is not a valid lawsuit. I mean, the person that files a lawsuit that says, I was killed because crossing A1A or my wife was killed crossing A1A, my daughter, whatever, was killed because you didn't have enough parking for me. I don't know what the case law says. Our city attorney would be able to, but I just think that's a hard, hard case that the city would not be liable for that. Maybe I'm way off. That's my instinct. And so I just want to get out of this as much as we can.
I was going to suggest, so we can break our record of ten, you know, going past ten, maybe we can go ahead and, and move to say that we can.
So, so no action? You guys can just bring it back, right? Or, or?
Yes, sir.
Right? No, please.
I also, uh, I see that Moon Hut is going to reopen next door. That's Vincent Keenan's project. And I'm just wondering, I imagine that Kimberly Horn will consider if they're reopening, how that may or may not affect Ellie Mays. That's just a question that I have.
Well.
Just, you know, a concern. That's it. No, we don't know yet.
Yes, I mean, I'm not sure there's a question there, but.
No, I'm just, just a comment.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's, it will.
We can move, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, great. So now we're able, thank you all very much. Um, we're able to move on now to item number ten, right?
Yes, sir.
Am I on part? Yep, item number ten, award, uh, bid for construction structural buildings at the wastewater reclamation facility to C and D Construction, Inc. of Cocoa, Florida, and the amount of one million four hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred and authorize the city manager to execute construction agreement for the same. Now, my understanding, I'll let the city manager explain, this is the last, um, state revolving fund, SRF expenditure in the queue, in the, the list. Cool. Maybe you take it from there. I think that's exciting.
Thank you. Mia, if you'll go to the next page, there's a, a graphic that June helped me create. It's really very helpful. Uh, and it shows an overview of the plant. There are eight blue rectangles showing the eight places where this contract would apply. Essentially, in the most, for the most cases, there, these are pumps or other pieces of equipment that are just exposed to the, the salt air environment that it's recommended that these be enclosed. When I say enclosed, it's not fully enclosed. In most cases, it's a roof and three walls that will protect the, the, these assets and extend their lives. Uh, they're, uh, discussed in further detail in the, uh, in the, um, project description. May I, Mia, if you go forward uh, the beginning there where you were. These are the eight locations, what they do, um, and, um, a variety of things that are being protected here. But, uh, we're calling this for simplicity, the structural buildings. And as you said, Mayor, this is the SRF-funded, anticipated and budgeted funded last expense of the SRF loan, a low-interest loan protects these assets for the community's betterment. Um, and the project was put out to bid. I want to go to the next page, Mia, and talk about the project budget. Um, the project was initially, um, scheduled to begin in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, three hundred and one thousand was included in that budget. However, the work was not done for various reasons. It was delayed until fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and in that budget had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the completion of work, work for a total of one point zero five one over a two-year period. However, the low bid in this environment of inflation with value engineering is one point four four three. So there's a shortfall of three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. So, um, came in higher than we expected. However, when we consider that several previous SRF projects were completed under budget and we canceled one project, the funds are, uh, definitely sufficient and adequate in the SRF, um, there.
The canceled project, will that one, when will it cancel, meaning we're not going to do it ever or and it canceled it for this year's?
Jeff and June, would you, whichever one of you wants to answer that?
It. Thank you.
That's building a, uh, a stormwater fund on Center Street. However, we'll kind of take another route to get that following.
That's turning into ARP, uh, or at least qualified for ARP, but, or.
I know Dave's had a lot of discussions with the new owner.
Okay, so in that, that one, um, facilities report, it was a Kim, who, who put that, was that Meeden Hunt? Meeden Hunt, so this is the last one. Um, so the more, more exciting, we, we're going to be able to feel the, hopefully the effects of it, because I remember reading that. As they say, plastic rusts out here. So enclosing all these facilities, that's a lot of money for that. Maybe it's bigger than I think it is and when I see it, but I would have never guessed that to put bricks, yeah. It, they're massive structures. So, well, thank you. I have no further question. Okay. Anything else? Um, Councilmember Willis, can you hear us? This is, uh, the contract?
Yes, I, I can hear everything.
Anything on your side?
No, no, I'm fine with what we have here.
There's light at the end of the tunnel. We're almost done. Thank you for hanging with us.
No, it's almost directed.
Okay. I think we do.
I was just going to say, I think it is a lot of money, but I think in the long run, by doing this, it's going to save the city money.
I hope so, yeah. It was recommended to help protect those assets. Okay, great. Any, anything else? We good? Yeah, looking for a motion. To award the bid. Item number ten.
I'll make a motion to adopt the, the bid.
Approve the bid?
Approve the bid, yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by Mayor for Tim Raymond to award the bid for item number ten. City clerk.
Councilmember Davis.
Four.
Councilmember Kellam. Mayor Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Councilmember Willis.
Four.
Right. Motion passes four oh. We've already taken up the discussion item number eleven at the beginning of the meeting. We are at the reports. I have a short one. Um, we are finished. This is the, this is the best Christmas present we've ever had. I'm pretty happy right now. Um, thank y'all. Uh, unfortunate circumstances, like again, thoughts and prayers with, with, uh, Councilmember Kellam. Uh, but not, my, uh, comment was, um, spoke with Lisa and the giving tree is growing. Uh, and so we want to encourage the residents, um, to please come down to City Hall. Our giving tree program is still going on. Ideally by December sixteenth, we're shooting for to try to get everything in, close the business, but the sooner the better. Get down so we have enough time um, to City Hall and grab a tag. That, so thank you. Um, that's all I had.
I just have a very brief report. Uh, I did go to Transportation and Intergovernmental, Intergovernmental Affairs on Thursday at Florida League of Cities. I just went for the policy meeting and I think I did tell you before that it's now called accessible housing is the first priority. And that's the first time this has happened in the six years that I've been on that committee and I'm very happy. Of course, transportation goes hand in hand. And, uh, that's really about it. And I also have to tell you that I have received this from Florida League of Cities that I earned the gold standard for completing the certification for their new award program because I've went to every single educational offering and attended everything that I was supposed to attend. And, uh, so I get a certificate. And I guess I get the certificate in August, so.
Oh, but it's bigger.
Finally, it's bigger than the postcard, but I was, I was quite surprised. There were three levels, bronze, silver and gold. But I'm getting gold.
Congratulations.
Thank you. In August. Thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
But that's the encouragement that we all go to the Institutes for Elected Officials. Thank you. Thank you.
Y'all have a good night.
You too.
Yes. Enjoy Africa, please.
Oh.
Lots of photos.
I'm just going to breakfast.
A coffee with the city manager will be this Friday at Management Creek Park at ten AM.
This Friday, coffee with the city manager, city attorney, anything? Anyone else? Final, meeting adjourned. Came off a couple of times. So that was. Came off a couple times, so that was-